I'm gonna open. Yep. Uh, Tracy needs to prepare us. Alright, good evening, everybody. I am calling to order the meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, seven o'clock PM. We are at Wilka Commons, ninety-one Sawyer Street. Um, we are gonna be in joint session with the Advisory Board later in the agenda sometime around seven thirty or seven forty PM. So Advisory Board members, I'll call you up. I know there's a new one in the audience. Around seven forty, they'll open their meeting separately and we'll continue from there. Um, so the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd like to join us. I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I just wanna remind the selectmen and Advisory Board members who are here that these mics are meant to be shared. They're more for the purpose of the transmittal to our television audience. And we, we can stay six to nine inches away and it should be fine, so just be sensitive to that. You don't need it right in front of you. It should be picking us up. Otherwise, I'm sure all of our text, text machines will start beeping. Okay, uh, the first order of business is public comment for items not on the agenda. If you're here for public comment, if you could come up and introduce yourself and, and give us your public comment and...
Paul Kiersey, where do I go through? I'm here as Vice Chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, last week we got our meeting and we were approached by residents in town who had some property that they were seeking to exchange with the town. And, um, so we took up that, uh, the subject matter and realized that the selectmen already have this opportunity to review. So I asked the landlords to provide us updated drawings of just the land moving with, um, one of the housing units that we just administered. So when the term was over to review, our community's already in preparation to help them out. Uh, we're gonna be ready to get down to work.
Great. Could you just hand those to Tracy and...
Uh, Paul, uh, Paul.
Go ahead.
Uh, just, 'cause the public's listening and curious themselves, where is this property at? Where are you talking about? It's what? I'm sorry. So, did you say four acres behind Town Hall?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else for items not on the agenda? Okay, uh, Tracy, the next thing on the agenda is an introduction of our two new staff members. Are they here?
There they are.
Okay. Okay, um, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and I am really sorry, but I, I don't wanna get your names incorrect. I know your first names, but if you don't mind introducing yourself.
I'm Miriam Johnson. I'm the new lead architect.
Hi, I'm Megan James. I'm the new library director.
Welcome. And Megan, what's your first day? Was, was it today?
Today.
Today?
It was a great day.
Did you come into a heated building or...
Yeah, it was heated.
Uh, yeah, AC parking lot and all that. Yeah, could you just tell us a little bit about yourself and where you came from?
Um, so I have come from the Turner Library in Randolph. I've been the director there for about five years. Uh, there I completed renovation, um, doing some really innovative outreach with bookending machines, um, and partnering with other department heads. And I look forward to use that to go to cohabitate as well. Um, I live in Detroit, so I feel a little bit as if I'm trying to come home. Uh, I worked in Cohasset very early in my library career, so I am coming back to the original library that I started at.
Wow, that's terrific. Um, selectmen, does anybody have a comment or...
Oh, congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Do you know that there's like a give a book, take a book that's in the parking lot out here? That what, it was one of the Eagle Scout projects a couple of years ago. So, you'll have to check that out too. Well, welcome aboard. Thank you. And Miriam, you could do the same?
Sure. Um, I was being charged as Director for the Town of Drennan, recently. And prior to that, I've been in general for five plus years. But prior to that, I was in private sector, um, most recently in the consulting, high-tech consulting. Um, looking for that, I've been some healthcare, manufacturing, and, um, and, and assembly kinds of classes. So I've been doing HR for a long time.
I know you've already hit the ground, quite literally sprinting.
Yeah, I've been busy. Been busy. Recruiting was a little, um, on hold until I got here. So we managed to make an offer to, uh, facilities tech in the DSW area. We hosted and we done research for the Director of Health Care Affairs. Um, and we've got a couple of librarian positions that I'll work with Megan on, and we have a payroll and benefits request.
That's great. Yeah, terrific. Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome. Alright, you two are dismissed. You don't need to feel like you need to stay here, but if you want to, local government's always interesting. Next up is a one-day liquor license for the Soshar Art Center. Um, they're looking for a one-day liquor license for February seventh, two thousand and nineteen, from seven to ten PM for, um, their semi-annual art off-the-wall event. And I don't see Patrice here. Is anybody here, else here from the Art Center? Nope. So this is just something for a fundraiser that they're having, um, that date.
Emily.
Six to nine inches. You don't need to touch it.
Emily, I've come to the board.
Okay.
The advisory committee, so I rolled off and presented her work. They went on to the advisory committee, and I just wanna say that this has been a wonderful event for a very reasonable price. She's a department head, she's a member, and then she's a piece of artwork off the wall and came to home for you, with you. So, that's great. Um, the Art Center, but it also embodies everything that's out there, so we're looking good.
Anybody like to move a one-day liquor license for February seventh?
So moves.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is a public hearing for a change of manager of the Cohasset Harbor Inn. I have a, uh, public hearing notice that I'm gonna read, um, and then I'm gonna ask, um, the parties to come up to the microphone and introduce themselves. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen, acting as liquor licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, at seven five, seven oh five PM at Wilka Commons, ninety-one Sawyer Street Cohasset Mass. The hearing is to consider the application of Cohasset Harbor Group LLC DBA Cohasset Harbor Inn located at one twenty-four Elm Street for a change of manager. The proposed manager is Christopher Day. The public is invited to offer public input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. Um, and if the parties would like to come up? Anything to know you, huh? Here. Okay. Hi, do you mind stepping like a little closer to the microphone? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Day, how long have you been on site?
I'm slightly a little over a month.
Okay. That's okay. I can hear you, but... Great. Um, I was actually at the Cove the other night for dinner and saw you working very hard. Good, it was, everything was great. Any comments or questions from the selectmen?
Are you aware of the liquor licenses for the town? Review them?
Yeah, I have the last, uh, last, um, regulations.
That's great. If you could make sure the office has it, um, um, and then obviously, you know, upon request from any of us, but we would go to Tracy or Chris first, so you can hand them that. Anything?
Good. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Um, would anybody like to make a motion for, uh, to, um, approve Christopher Day as the liquor, um, manager for the Cohasset Harbor Inn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
See, we're all in favor. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you. Good luck. We look forward to, uh, the spring and the summer and that wonderful location. Okay, um, Tracy, do you know who's here for interviews? Who's supposed to be here? Okay. Bob Henry, okay. Um, so let me just cue this up, Mr. Henry, and then, um, we'll go from there. We have a number of applications, or we're, we're in the process of receiving applications for both the Affordable Housing Trust and also, um, Town Hall Building Committee. We won't discuss the Town Hall Building Committee applicants tonight, only because we have one and there's still a few people whose status on the committee we're, um, trying to make official. Um, but we have a couple for the Affordable Housing Trust. The selectmen received in their packet this weekend, um, the bylaw section that discusses what the Affordable Housing Trust is. And let me get to the applications we have. So Mr. Mead can't be here, so we'll bring him in. We're not gonna make any, um, not gonna fill the committee tonight, but, um, we, we will discuss, um, the committee in, just in general terms. And I'll ask Mr. Henry to come up and introduce himself and... Actually, if you'd like to, yep, near a microphone, you can keep it six to nine inches away from your, um, so we don't get the reverb.
Testing, okay.
Yeah, you probably don't have to do it that close. Like, that's probably fine. If you don't mind introducing yourself, your address, and telling us a little bit about yourself?
Everybody, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Rob Henry, and I live over on Aaron River Reservoir, Aaron River Road in Cohasset, which is the second house I've had here in town. I've been in, uh, lived here in town for forty-two years, and I used to live on Fifty Atlanta Lane off of Pond Street. So I've been here long enough to see the, you know, the real interesting, some of the crazy things and all that with what's going on in the town. So it's been an interesting forty-two years.
And you're interested in the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yeah, that and the, uh, and then, you know, maybe even the, the Steering Committee. I did have a conversation with Steve Dahmer earlier today, but yeah, the, the thing that triggered this was the, uh, was the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, and, and how did you hear about it? Just through the paper?
I read it actually in the Mariner. Yep.
Great. Steve, you wanna talk, ask any questions?
Just gotta check for the green light.
I know.
Um, and, uh, uh, Rob Henry had given me a call. He's being very kind. It was a week ago when I finally answered my voicemail. I've known Rob for more than fifteen years, and I think fewer than twenty, but I'm not quite sure about that. Um, and so I, while I can vouch for, um, Rob as a, a person being and someone imbued with an enormous amount of common sense, one of the things I hadn't realized is that, uh, Rob's profession intersected pretty nicely with, uh, construction and, and building development. So if I may, just let me ask you to expound on that a little bit, and, uh, it's an area of expertise that the trust could use for certain.
Yeah, I have a, a number of years in, in the, uh, going way back within the electrical industry, dealing with electrical contractors and so forth. But I think more germane to what we're talking about now is that for the last fifteen years, I have been, uh, in the, uh, home automation, home technology, audio/video world. So I've been dealing with a number of builders and architects, developers, and all that. And I made a decision, uh, to retire from that, uh, company and that, that industry in November, uh, to pursue some other things. I, I had a job where I've worked very hard, and I, I, there's a lot of industry events and things that involve the builders and so forth. And I was, I was going out two or three nights a week along with working a regular week. And I just thought, uh, you know, it might be good to change and look at some other interests, both, uh, you know, not necessarily looking through a big, you know, money-paying job or anything like that, but things that where I could contribute to the growth and development of something. And it could be different things. So during the course of these last fifteen years, uh, I've learned a lot about the construction industry. I've dealt more in the, uh, higher-end industry, although I don't like to use the term "high-end" 'cause I think it's a little, little bit pretentious, but dealing with an incredible number of builders throughout the state and also locally here on the South Shore. So when I say I know a lot about construction, I don't mean that I can go out and frame a house or I'm gonna do that, but I know the ins and outs of how builders work, how they do things. Uh, I was involved, uh, years ago at the, uh, over, uh, no, why'd you say, forget it? But you know, where Toll Brothers was building their, you know, but the thing that was, the development was over there. Uh, I was able to get specified to, uh, do all the, the home automation, everything for those hundred and six homes that were gonna be there. So I got really involved in that, so I understand big developments and, and how that was gonna be. And also that even with that, uh, you know, the forty B was in effect, and then so I had to, uh, understand the forty B affordable housing, which obviously is different here in Cohasset relative to, you know, what's affordable forty B here might not be affordable forty B in, you know, pick, take your pick, Brockton or something like that. So I was very involved in that, and in fact, I was very disappointed from a business standpoint that it didn't go through, but there's probably some people remember those, the timing wasn't good. They rejected the, uh, the sewer system. And, uh, which is, again, uh, I'm not afraid, I guess, to also voice opinions, but I think it was a mistake on the town's part to make such an issue out of the sewer because you had, uh, over fifty-five people gonna be there, pay the taxes, milk children in the school system. It was like a, you know, like a, a big bonus. But anyway, it, uh, went by the wayside, you know, so that was a local experience here. But as I say, I've been involved, knowing how builders operate and, and, uh, able to evaluate. And I've talked to a lot of, you know, homeowners and things over the years and understand how they make their decisions and, and so forth, so...
Thanks. Um, just before I let the other selectmen speak, or not let, but ask them to. Um, one of, just for everybody to know, the, um, Affordable Housing Trust, I'm just gonna read you a couple of sentences from the description. "The purpose of the trust is to provide for the creation and preservation of affordable housing in the town of Cohasset for low and moderate income households, and for the funding of community housing as defined in, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law forty-four B." Um, and the bylaws call for a board of trustees with staggered terms. Ultimately, they have, um, responsibilities and powers, including accepting and receiving real property, personal property, or money by gift, grant, contribution, devise, or transfer from any person, um, and to, and to use those towards, um, meeting the, the purpose of the trust for the creation of housing. So it is a, it is a stewardship role on behalf of the town vis-à-vis affordable housing. Jack, anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you. So there, there basically are two options. One is the, being on the, as a trustee, the other would be on the Steering Committee. Um, you willing to be a trustee?
Pardon?
You're, you're willing to be a trustee?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Um, because that, you know, building a, building this group, um, the trustees are an important part of both being involved, but also the, you know, the fiduciary responsibility, I don't know if you use that word, all the finance people in town, that is. I, I don't know what it is. I just know you need to take care of the money.
Right.
The other thing, as you build the, um, the trustees, I, from looking at a board, and when you build a board, you try to find people that can work well together. Um, we try to look for a team that would be a little bit, um, broad. One might be building, one might be, uh, completely independent, one might be a financial type, one might be a person in town. So you might be the, the very first person that, um, or the first person that we see here. You've been in town a long time, you know, honestly, if you, if you see people that are out there, because we've had a hard time getting people to basically volunteer, to do a fairly important job for the town, uh, stewardship of the monies that might be coming in from the state, you know, from grants, from the town, from elsewhere, to set this up so we can have affordable housing. So, um, I'll, I'll put the pitch towards you as well as everyone else here, because we had a difficult time getting that.
I think, I think again, my, my goal right now is, I mean, I've, I've been fortunate to have a good deal of success in business, and I've, I've organized many things. I've run sales, run marketing, run divisions. I've been involved in, you know, with budgets and so forth, although I don't, I don't wanna tout myself as a, I'm not a financial guy. I'm not a financial sense, but I have an understanding of dollars and cents and, you know, how it may be applicable. And again, I, I, I wanna do something that's gonna, uh, contribute to the growth of town. I think that I've always been, uh, for the most part, pleased for the town, and you can't just sit on your laurels. You've gotta make things better and figure out how to improve it. And I think, you know, if we can drive this affordable housing and kinda be in control of it more than the state being in control of it, I think is important too, you know, what, but, and one of the things that anybody who's been in sales, you know, when you have a meeting with a potential customer or customer, you wanna be in control of that meeting, no matter what you know, you want, but the other guy talk and make their presence known and their opinions. But you don't wanna lose control, even in a meeting like this. Diane, you wanna, you're gonna, you're gonna be in control, even without the hammer, hammer.
Just having, just having it.
Yeah, so I, I think that's the, and I, and I, usually my approach is, uh, pretty straightforward and sincere, but yet, uh, you know, like Steve and I were talking a little bit today about the, you know, the big thing today of politically correct everything. I mean, I think you have to have a lot of respect for people and all that, but that doesn't mean you can't state your case and, uh, without hopefully, you know, not hurting everybody's feelings, but sometimes it, uh, it might come up, so... Now, also, one, one other thing that, uh, I mean, it's so many years back, so whether anybody thinks it's important or not, but I actually was, uh, I remember what they call the representative town meeting years ago in the town of Groton, Connecticut, next to Mystic. I was part of Mystic. And it was, uh, very young then, but I always wanted to learn how the town ran. It was, it was a town of about forty-five thousand people, and, uh, in fact, I was elected. And it came in on a big, a bunch of people in town and the state, and so I was elected to the decision in, I think it was three years. It was just interesting to see how the town operated, you know, and our, the, the responsibility of the RTM really was the, it was the financial thing. We, we approved all the budgets. People submitted budgets to our group, and so we had to evaluate and determine whether that budget was gonna be granted or part of it or whatever. So it, uh, kinda gave me some good experience there. You might, so we might say, uh, you know, what, did you ever think about doing anything here in town with that? But again, with my, with my job and all that, I just, you know, with kids growing up and so forth, I just never got into it. Yeah, so anyway.
Not too late. Kevin?
So just, are we looking, we're not gonna make any appointments tonight, is that correct?
Right, only because we really, isn't the first person we've had an opportunity to talk to.
When are we looking to make appointments?
As soon as, I would say we have a critical mass, easily.
What is this, a seven-person?
Well, it's a seven-person committee, so I would say when we have at least four, that...
And then we can make them all at the same time?
Make a forum and then actually give them some...
So then the other question is, how close are we to needing this to be functional? Uh, don't, don't we have a project that is somewhat in need of this board?
For, for what it's worth, um, one of the seven is a selectman appointee, in other words, a, a selectman.
One of us.
Uh, appointed. One of the seven is a selectman, so that, then six would be appointed. Uh, Rob is the first that we've spoken with, and there are a total of three applicants at this point. And functionally, no project can go forward without a trust to hold it. So no matter how much work the Steering Committee does to advocate for projects, even if we were nearly complete on a, on a, uh, particular site, we don't have a, an operating trust at the moment that could hold funds, could hold real property, could conduct the business of, of managing that property. So we should be working pretty, pretty good.
You've never had a, you've never had a trust before?
We did, yep.
When was that?
Um, last time it was operational was, uh, was, was, was quite some time ago.
Yeah, it's everybody termed off.
It was never funded, so we technically didn't have a trust. And that's a piece of business, I just wanted to remind everybody, we do have a fund as trust. We may wanna do it at the annual town meeting. It doesn't need to be a lot of money. We just need to put something in there.
Well, that, it, it can be, it can be a number of things beyond just funds. It can also be real property.
So who among the, uh, selectmen or people in the town are familiar with kinda what this is gonna be to, uh, provide, you know, somebody some guidance in the beginning in terms of coming up with a plan or following, following a, a direction?
I think once the committee's, you mean it's sort of in advance, so people...
Well, no, if, 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 if you, if I was accepted, I mean, what sort of information could I gather? You know, you don't just step into something and, uh, you know, without some knowledge and background and, uh, ideas from people and so forth, that, you know, put it all together.
So, I mean, you, you got the Affordable Housing Steering Committee that's functional and running now, and they're knowledgeable of the needs of the town, so you should talk to them. You can do that right away. You shouldn't wait.
I agree.
I would, uh, call the chairman and ask, you know, or the vice chair, or the vice chair who's there. Paul Kiersey, what name, sir?
Yeah, once we have the committee... Kiersey with a K-I-E-R-C-E. Did you wanna add something, Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to, there, there's a state organization, uh, trust, we're not the only place that has, this was created under state law. So there's an organization that's ready to jump on down and come in and do some, you know, get up to speed, uh, classes, I guess, in training that, that support organizations all around the state of, of a similar model. So they're, they're, actually, they just emailed, uh, Pete and myself, and I think members of the Affordable Housing Steering Committee as well. So they're ready to come on to come down to Cohasset and do some training as well.
Our hope is to have the trust, you know, at least a core group, so that it has, it's a forum that can meet, which will be four, including us, one of those being a selectman. And probably the first order of business would be to meet jointly with the selectmen and the Affordable Housing Steering Committee to sort of talk about what's out there and start, you know, putting together a plan of action for specifically the trustees and what funding might be needed. Um, the, the, the thing that I read from is from, directly from the bylaws, if, and this is for anybody that's interested in the, in the housing trust, I recommend going on to the CohassetMA.org and just in the search box looking up "housing trust." Um, and that will give you, it's, it's pretty extensive. It's four or five printed pages. It's, it's CohassetMA.org is the town website.
Oh, the town website.
Yep, and then the search within that would be the, for the Cohasset Housing Trust. And that will be everything that's in the bylaws that explains exactly what the roles and responsibilities are, without getting specific to what's going on in that. Again, is, would be a conversation with Affordable Housing right now. Section thirty dash sixty-nine of the bylaws. Yeah. Yep. Thirty dash sixty-nine, but literally, what I did was just typed in Affordable Housing Trust and I came up with it. So thank you for your time tonight. You will hear from us soon, 'cause this is something we wanna make, um, you know, hopefully by middle of, middle end of February, we'll have something in the works.
Thank you all for letting me come.
Thank you, and you can always feel free to call any of us for any other general questions.
Thanks, Rob. Alrighty.
For your time. Okay, the next thing, and I'm gonna hand these down. I apologize, it sat in my, um, my outbox for the whole weekend. I anticipated that this would get into your hands before the weekend, um, so we could have a fulsome discussion. It's for the selectmen now. Is this for Chris? Well, she may wanna join it, right? Um, so one of the things, um, at two meetings ago, we, um, in the center of this paper are five goals that we discussed, um, and adopted unanimously, uh, on January eighth. Um, and the one thing we didn't do was put those goals into the context of, um, sort of a, this is what the Town Hall Building Committee is. So I, I wrote this up for discussion. My intent was to... discussion. My intent was to, again, have this in your hands over the weekend so you could discuss it. But it basically says the Town Hall Building Committee will serve as the direction of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen and work with the town manager and other town personnel committees and consultants to advance the goals of the Board of Selectmen relative to the Town Hall project. Town Hall Building Committee will provide updates to the Board as requested and at least once a month. It is a very general context to the five goals that we set forth. I would love any just general input now and we can officially vote it at the next meeting. You know, what's missing from this? Our charges are usually very general, you know, like this, without giving specific action items, although down the bottom I put certain things that we could discuss as action items. So any input you have?
Well, the answer is, yeah.
So I mean, when I see it, we've already voted on, decided on one through five unless I missed something, right?
Yes, correct. Yeah, yeah.
So there's no reason why we can't, I, I think the only positive discussion might be the initial directions we want to give them. Obviously, we're pointing them towards question B, which is, I guess that was just the main ingredient.
Yes, so down, down the bottom, and I, I have, I see a typo which is jumping out at me, but this, this wasn't intended to be the charge. This was just intended to be sort of, when-
Direction.
Yeah, direction that we wouldn't necessarily vote on at all tonight. These are just me thinking. But I want to make sure I have this top part correct and if there's anything missing within that.
I think what the project is, I'm, I'm not clear on the bottom portion that we discussed.
Forget the bottom. Forget the bottom. That's, I'm, I'm asking you to not-
So bottom meaning the last line on the, or initial action item on five.
I'm, I want to discuss the charge, which is the-
Fantastic.
-little paragraph at the top and the five things that we voted on.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good move.
Yeah, no, that was the intent. Sorry if I didn't make that clear. The others are just my notes. And I, because Kevin thought that we really, what we, what we were missing in our goals, is it really a framing context to it? So.
Well, what I thought was important myself is, is that as we bring people to the board, if they see what it is that we want, so we don't run into the same scenario we had last time, six months down the road, and we weren't on the same page. So we already voted on this, so I thought we, we should have this charge. So that anybody who comes onto the committee needs to have read the charges, like we asked the liquor people, if they read their regulations. So everybody knows, starting, starting off, that they're on page one. And then two, the fact that we have this clearly delineated now will help recruit the committee. Because people, maybe the Mariner will write about it, we can post it on, wherever, so people can see, well, this is the charge and that will help attract, you know, people to the task. So that, that was what was in my mind.
Yep.
Give direction and what's also promulgated.
So what would you like to do with this?
So I'd like one, one or, one of two things. My, again, my intention was that we would approve this top part tonight, except I didn't get it out to everybody because it was lost in space, so to speak. Diane needs a new computer. So if you think this is ready to roll, we could accept it. If you think it needs more teasing, we can do it at the next meeting, knowing that it's, at least this is something, something we can go out with.
Yeah, I'd like to adopt it. We have the five goals that we discussed, adopted and voted on. We have a general descriptive paragraph of what we're looking at.
Anybody have any issues with that?
I'm, I hate to say it, but I didn't hear it.
He basically was moving the top.
Find the way it is.
Okay.
And then if we have any little edits, and again, it's really just framing up the five goals that we've already adopted.
I, I agree with Paul.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we should move the edits. We can't wait.
Steve, I just want to talk to Steve. I want to hear Steve's comments.
We're, we're already five steps ahead of where we were last time. Putting, putting objectives out front. Frankly, if, if the Town Hall Building Committee were to take these without any further direction from us, I think they've got clear, clear enough directions on what we'd like to achieve, to be able to come up, come back with a, an option or a set of options that would allow us to move the project ahead. So we may not like all the answers.
Absolutely.
But I think we're ready to go.
So assuming Paul made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So Tracy, the top part. We got Diane's notes down the bottom. Okay, thank you. All right. So that's something. And then hopefully at our next meeting, we will have some additional candidates and we can fill that committee because that needs to start, well, moving right along. Next up is referral of proposed Cohasset Harbor zoning amendment. So our Director of Planning, Pete Machek, is going to come up and walk us through this, which was in our packet. You can do whatever you'd like. Just stick six to nine inches away from that microphone so we don't blast people.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me.
You don't need to even talk into it. I think you'll be okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because then it'll go woo.
So I can-
We did get them in our packet.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yep.
I'll just hand you the-
So this is a proposed warrant article for annual town meeting.
Correct. So this is a proposed warrant article for annual town meeting. So since the last time I was in front of this committee, this board, I would say the town has worked with Harriman Associates. Harriman Associates is, is the consultant for the harbor plan. So therefore, we have used Harriman, who is working with us, to help the town develop an appropriate change of use to the site, the three sites that are currently zoned waterfront business district. And the three sites are locally known as the Cohasset Harbor Inn, Atlantica, in the, and the Lobster Pound area. I believe the, with the railway, with the Marine Railway, and there's also a boat, a boat storage facility there. Those are the current three businesses that are actually zoned waterfront business. And so it would be adding a use via special permit to the planning, which would be conducted by the planning board. So there, if adopted, there would be a full public hearing process that would be developed through the planning, the planning board process.
So, let me just, so this, this looks similar to-
Correct, correct.
To something that was proposed.
Yes. And just to explain what the, the har, you know, there's a change of use on the site. And I think everyone knows that, you know, the Cohasset Harbor Inn is under new ownership. And I did pass out that map because there's two things, two elements that the town of Cohasset, through the Harbor Plan Committee, has identified. And it is to increase public access to the harbor and also to increase a view shed, a view corridor down Elm Street to the harbor. Right now, if you go, come down Elm Street, the current building at the Cohasset Harbor Inn blocks any view of the harbor. And so with the proposal of this zoning change, two elements that would be looked at within the public hearing process by the planning board would be public access to the waterfront and also a view shed of that area. And this also comes into play as the harbor plan actually wraps up. And I would like to take this opportunity to announce the harbor plan will have a meeting this Thursday at the Sailing Center at six thirty. And Harriman will be here in town and they're going to present the draft of their, of their harbor report. And so, so with that said, it's a great opportunity, this is a great opportunity for the town to really look at, look at the future uses along the harbor front.
I, I'm only, I was kind of glancing at Chris, only because there's like five meetings on Thursday night in town, all, all of which are of great import. Chris, can you walk us through tonight's discussion slash action and what it queues up?
Right. So, so, so this is, this is purely procedural at this point. So, so the way this proposed zoning change for a, a town meeting works is the, the actions referred by the selectmen to the planning board for public hearing and discussion. The planning board then conducts public hearings. And if, if they get to a consensus, it comes back to the selectmen for this discussion about whether or not to include it on the warrant. If the selectmen do put it on the warrant, then it goes in front of town meeting, which has to approve it by a two-thirds vote. And this is how, you've done this multiple times in the past. So all this does is start the public hearing process. And the selectmen have to refer this then back to the planning board.
And the, and the warrant, if the planning board through the hearing process did make a recommendation that we then put on the warrant at annual town meeting, it would be very specific-
Yes.
-zoning language. They, that's what the public hearing process would reveal.
Correct. And that's the reason the planning board requested that Harriman be brought on to do the drafting. While we have staff, you know, full-time staff for the first time, this is a little bit more intricate than that. It also gives a third-party perspective and Harriman was already doing the work on the waterfront, so it's in the natural conversation.
Correct.
And again, so all this does, this starts the conversation, doesn't end it. And it still has to come back to the board and the advisory committee for further comment before it ever got to town meeting floor.
And please note, there's a couple, you know, Article X and, you know, square footage. Right now, we, as a town and myself and my office are working with the current business owners of the property. They're doing, you know, out, you know, you know, test fits to the site, you know, what, you know, what the elements that if, if there was a change of use they could kind of move forward to. I would like also to note that this article is a mirror image of the current village business district, which, which allows for mixed-use development via special permit from the, for, for the planning board to vote on. And so therefore, it's very similar to the Village District.
So I know that Clark wants to say anything. Do any of the selectmen want to ask a question right now? Kevin, you want to go first?
So to be clear then, this warrant article has been brought to us by the planning board? Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
The planning board is bringing this file? So it's not particularly filling in terms of details. So it's my understanding that the planning board is then going to have a couple of public hearings and then the planning board is going to draft this article? Is that correct?
Yes.
Then they'll bring it back. And obviously, if they bring it back, it'll be something the planning board is recommending. I just want to check my-
Yes. And if they, if they don't recommend it, it's not going to come back.
And if they don't recommend it, we won't see it unless it's, so there's going to be initial screening of this to the planning board. And this originated from the planning board.
Yes.
I don't have a question. I wouldn't necessarily start there anymore, but from a process point of view, it seems that the harbor plan isn't done. And I don't, I don't know what the master plan is not done either. I'm just, it just strikes me procedurally that we're, we're doing the zoning thing before, we're, just as we're about to finish these other planning things. It seems discordant to me.
I, I think the opportunity is presented, so this, this conversation actually kind of follows up to the one that happened last fall, when a prior group, which actually is , which is actually where the map came from-
Yep, yep.
-was looking and there were, there were conversations around, in town, and then it stopped. And now there's new local owners and they've asked to pick, pick up the same conversation. And the planning board, again, Clark can speak for the planning board, I'm just talking about process. The, so they picked it up and they've been having conversations with the planning board in order to have a more robust community conversation. They, you know, it goes here to get referred back to planning. And then if people don't want to move, you know, I mean, there's no, there's no obligation to move. The thing is that with the town meeting for-
It's possible where the planning board could look at what's proposed and then figure themselves what I just said. Well, maybe the planning board will want to see what the harbor study is in its entirety and what the master plan is. I'm just-
Well, yes.
Would they have power to do that?
Absolutely. And in fact, with the, with the draft coming out Thursday-
Correct, on Thursday night.
It's, it's actually, for the, it's, it's actually timing out much better than it was last fall when the planning, when the harbor plan wasn't even in New York.
Okay. So I, I would just make a comment and then I would, I would hope that the planning board would, because they're going to have time to do this, is whatever they do, that they take a look at whatever master plan says about this area and what harbor plan, because, you know, we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on these and there's optics and proper procedure that people in the town be concerned about too. So as much as wherever this may fit in well, it needs to be done in such a ways that it looks open and transparent. We've looked at all alternatives. We haven't rushed it for the sake of either a developer or anybody else. So I would make that comment.
I know. I just speak to that. You know, Harriman, the group that is working with us on the zoning change, has held multiple public forums in this building, in this room, filled with forty to fifty people. And so we've done, the harbor plan has done a lot of outreach and kind of a lot of, you know, groundwork to, to really kind of develop that plan. And so has the master plan over the last, I would say, eighteen months. So with that said, I think a lot of those public comments and public interests that has been collected by both committees has been shared with Harriman and, and also with the MAPC group.
I agree, but you know, there's a process point here where we're so struggling here, but those reports need to be completed in, in a proper way. Because we, we need to show the whole town that we're doing this properly, not just that we've been through a process and we're not done with the reports to take our word for it. It's just, I think I made my point. Those reports, but again, I understand what you're saying, but still you don't want to rush it until you've done, you know, we spent two hundred thousand dollars on this time doing planning on the harbor and the master. Let's finish the reports, see what they have to say with this and see how this is. Only seems logical to me. And it's good government. Since I don't want to have not good governance on an issue like this in Cohasset.
Thank you.
Paul, I'll go to you next and then Steve.
Yeah, I, so you know, these are, these are properties that are, I mean, that are unique, but they have some value from access from the public point of view, waterfront property or certain, uh, restrictions on you have to have people be able to get access to. And I see in the, in the recommended, supposed, uh, supposing bylaws that would be changing of the, of that property, it in there states the applicant is provided open spaces, including a walkway that is accessible to public in connection with the harbor-wide walkway. In addition, the first floor residential uses are not yet addressed with that continuity of any place of public accommodation, public right-of-bon access. So I, I like to see that in there because that, those pieces of property by their nature have allowed for public access.
Correct. And, and that really refers to the chapter ninety-one law in the Massachusetts that protects, which is a, goes back to the colonial time, that protects the public access to the colonial, median high tide line. And so therefore, you know, that top law was put into effect for foul fishing game. But here, we're talking about public access. And, you know, foul fishing, we don't really go out and follow and fish and, you know, catch game out of these flats too, too often anymore. However, what this really kind of looks for is, you know, chapter ninety-one. The chapter ninety-one line actually cuts through all three properties. And really, we're looking at, at the state website, really when you get over towards the, the Marina area, that, that the chapter ninety-one line almost disappears because some of those buildings are on, you know, pilings. And so I would say if there was any development to occur, you know, a survey, you know, a real in, in-depth survey would have to be developed. However, for the other two parcels, yes, and ninety in one line cuts right through them. So therefore, all those property, those two properties need to conform to the regulations and that are also cited within the master, I mean, the harbor plan. So here, we're trying to link the, the zoning change up to the harbor plan.
Steve?
Um, I, I'd like to feel like I'm always well-informed on such things, but I have to ask a really simplified question. Can you in two or three sentences summarize the effective zoning changes from where they are now to what they will provide?
From the zoning change that will provide the town, it will be a change of use. Right now, in the waterfront business district, multifamily residential units is not allowed. And it's only business commercial that is relatively related to the waterfront. So therefore, this gives the new owners an opportunity to reinvest into their properties.
Okay. Second, the second part of that question is with respect to the illustrations of, the property illustrations we've been given, the, there's a, what is currently an empty lot running along Margin Street. Do you know the one I'm talking about? It's across from the, one of the town landings.
Uh, yes.
Okay. That would also be affected by the zoning change. So it's, it's possible that that could be a developed property as well?
That lot, I, I believe in my, I'll have to look further into that, but I know that lot has issues concerning topography and the, the height of the site. I know that.
No, no. I, I, assuming that, that all other requirements could be met, that that is, that is one that could be affected.
Uh, right now- Right now, no, that is not within the threes, it's not within the three lots currently.
Okay. That was never in the discussions.
Correct, that was never in the discussion. I know it's across the street.
So, this is an old map that was.
Correct, that was actually done.
A long time ago, is that what the issue is?
I said, so that map, I was just trying to provide, the View Corridor down Elm Street, that was actually produced by Harbinger, who is a previous.
Right.
You know, the coroners haven't really produced too much, but just to give this board and this committee a glance of the harbor and the properties, I did want to provide that map tonight.
Okay, and then my final question for the moment is that the proposed zoning bylaw changes or amendments that are being requested for referral.
Mm-hmm.
Are these as a result of the harbor plan, the master plan, or a single entity, a single user?
I would say S.D., all the above.
Okay, so the discussions with respect to property use have been part of the master plan, or the harbor plan?
Part of the harbor plan, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and then I'll.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. This map, this piece of work was done prior to the current owners of the properties, prior to us doing work on overlays for the harbor?
Correct.
So, the pieces of property we're talking about for a potential overlay are the Marina, the Atlantica, and the Cohasset Harbor Inn?
Correct, and that's not an overlay, it's a, it's a change of use to the zoning.
Change, sorry, sorry for the language.
Correct. Yep, no, currently, those three properties are currently zoned waterfront business, and we're adding a special permit clause, we're introducing a special permit vehicle to that, to the waterfront business district.
Great, thank you. So.
Got it, yeah, this is, this was more for our.
That was just for overview of, just to kind of, as a map, to give you a geographical reference.
And some of the more specifics were in, were part of the harbor plan that we got in our.
Correct, correct, and I think on Thursday night, you'll be able to.
There'll be more and there'll be more.
Yes, you'll be able to know, to really kind of pull up some in-depth details, you know, from the harbor plan.
Okay, Clark, did you, if you want to say something, do you mind coming up? All right, go ahead. Yep, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
When you say that this is, the overlay would be allowing for residential, that would be essentially the key thing to be done, is that correct?
It's a change of use, yeah, it's not overlay.
What are the, can you describe the, what that residential would have been, so what are we talking about there?
Well, first, it would involve a special permit process, which.
What structures themselves then?
Well, that's, it's too early to, you know, it's, I don't know.
So, that would be something that would be put into this at all, that would come back?
Correct.
I mean, part of the reason was, we've had some development in town near the downtown area that a lot of people become concerned about, because it was approved and done and so forth, and then there's a huge amount of growth that really, you know, was much more than people thought, and I was just wondering, could that happen here? Because you're talking about Atlantica, you're talking about the Walk, you're talking about what is now the Harbor Inn, that's quite a lot of the.
I think that's a, that's a question that could be answered after the, after the planning board has a, you know, open hearing process, and works with Harriman, and really kind of looks at what the design could be. You know, with Harriman, we're going to have, get an urban designer down to Cohasset to really look at the connection from the village to the harbor. And so I think that's a, that's a question that's really not ripe yet to answer.
So, that would be right when the planning board does hearings, they'll craft in what they recommend.
Correct, correct.
They'll have a clearer answer on that.
Correct, and like, you know, what Chris has stated, this is procedurally the kickoff, allowing the planning board to open a public hearing for the zoning change, which then would be referred back up to the board of selectmen.
And the second question I have was, is in this article itself, is there any considerations in there as to what the impact of whatever would be there on infrastructure? So, for example, if you put in one of the units at some time, is there a consideration as to where they would be packing those units? Because from right now, it would be.
Yes, a hun, parking will be looked at.
Well, I didn't say that's in here, but that, that would be looked at as part of the planning process.
A hundred percent.
Okay. Do you mind identifying yourself for the record, and then whatever you need to say?
Chairman of the Planning Board, he's covered most of the important aspects of the zoning change referrals to the planning board for our public hearing. A couple of other things that I wanted to point out that are important. We have a ZAC, a zoning advisory committee. We will have the, have a ZAC convene and take a look at this, these zoning changes in terms of what the potential impact might be. Last summer, there was quite a bit of interest in what the changes might be at the harbor. I think the harbor itself is looking a precious and finite resource for all of our citizens. What I think is important is that we figure out a way to balance public and private sector interest. We understand that there are businesses at the harbor that haven't been doing well over the last few years. I think the planning boards and most people in town want the harbor to be a vital resource, a place where people can go and enjoy, a place where there's restaurants, activities, enough parking, and fortunately, unfortunately, we need to create housing. In a way, this is the village. The housing subsidizes the commercial interest in the village. You know, rents for commercial property are historically low in these areas, and the, and we need the financial to help it up. In terms of the overall process, though, you refer this to the planning board for the hearings. We try and get as much information as we can as a part of the overall process to make a good decision and recommendation regarding the language thing, that a hundred percent could be reviewed at town meeting. Having someone on board who's drafted this language, who has a great familiarity with the harbor, having done the harbor plan at Harriman, we've also asked that they participate in a vision, collection of ideas, a vision charrette, that, similar to the drawings that you have, brings out, this drawing brings out a couple of ideas, it brings up mixed-use development, it brings up a beautiful order down Elm Street that connects to the harbor, and brings up this walkway around the harbor. There may be other aspects of the vision that are going to be important, coming out of the harbor plan, that comes into this charrette session or sessions, that are going to be moving in parallel with the use of the zoning. Having the harbor plan staffing up, having a vision session and Harriman can give us guidance on what this is going to be. In addition to, the developer has said that they're going to be looking at the master studies, goals for what the changes will look like. So that we have a complete picture with the zoning change, we have a vision session, we have a developer providing drawings that says, this is what the zoning change will allow, this is what it can look like, so that everybody has more or less a complete picture of what the transformation of the harbor could be.
Great, I'm going to stop you there, because I want to make sure we don't get too far down the what-ifs, but I do think it's.
I covered everything.
I think it's really, I think it's really important that that parallel track does happen, because whatever is ultimately recommended or not to town meeting, they're going to want to know what that, what that really means. You know, you can put tables and charts and, you know, square footage and use information in there, and zoning information, but unless they understand how that might actually play out, it's going to be a tougher sell. But obviously, with the harbor study behind it too, you know, I think that would do it. So, procedurally, you know, if somebody on the board would like to make.
Yeah, so, I think this is very important, so I'd like to see this start. The first step is going to be getting all the schematics going, and get the original portion up and running for public hearings. So, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing process for new land use in the waterfront district.
Okay. And the one, so a motion to shorten up the public hearing process, is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Just, yeah, if I may, just to be clear, it's a motion to refer this to the planning board to begin the public.
Okay, motion to refer this to the planning board?
Motion to refer the open public hearing process for the new land use in the waterfront district.
Refer to the planning board.
Second.
Okay, is all those in favor?
No, no, excuse me.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
They may be commenting.
Okay, come ahead.
So, can we get some explanation for ourselves in the public as to what we're voting on in terms of what does that process mean? So, is it going to be two meetings, is it going to be, you know, just so that, you know, we can have some further extra detail as to what we're voting on, what does that mean when we're doing the referral? What's going to happen?
Could you just, yeah, explain the public hearing process at the planning board level, Pete, do you mind?
Sure. So, with the next, so, well, tomorrow night, the planning board will meet, and this is not on the agenda, because this public hearing right here that's in front of you tonight has to go in a newspaper of public circulation for two consecutive weeks. The first being fourteen days prior to the planning board public hearing. With that said, on February sixth, the planning board will hold a public hearing, and it will be in Wilcox Commons in this room, and we will be here with the planning board with Harriman, and we will, you know, discuss and look at, you know, zoning and talk about the issues. I will be working with the consultants over the next two weeks, and, you know, what I'm really looking forward to is the next really, the next development step will be the unveiling of the draft harbor plan, which takes place on Thursday night, and therefore, the planning board will have a copy of that, and then we can kind of procedurally work our way towards this. I believe there'll be two, you know, three, I think, as long as the calendar kind of lets itself work out, about three meetings, public meetings with the planning board before.
Is that the way it is by law?
No, by law, there only needs to be one.
And if you're going to have three public meetings?
I may have, I would say, depends on the calendar. I can't say three, I would, I would say it's going to be more than one, but coming down, you know, whenever the warrant is due, that really kind of pushes the date up.
Mariner, two weeks before.
So, this is, so this is posted on the website, however, but due to the dates of the, really, the Mariner is, they publish on a Friday, I have to work three weeks before, and so therefore, this public hearing is actually posted in the Patriot Ledger.
Is it posted? Because I got a note somewhere, this is actually posted already.
It has been posted on the website, correct.
You didn't vote on it, huh?
It's a public, well, procedurally, I.
Yeah, I mean, so Kevin, we've done this sometimes, not because the publication deadlines are really tight, and we have a very limited window, so if the board said no, then there would be no hearing, if there was no referral.
You'd take it to the hearing?
Yeah, it starts the process, so you don't lose any time.
I interrupted, you voted with the process.
Nope, so I was just trying to get in, you know, I don't want to get too far into the weeds with the laws, the national laws concerning zoning changes, however, it does have to be advertised, does have to be sent to a budding towns, a regional planning agency, and the state, but therefore, the public, the planning board will host a public hearing on February sixth.
Just succinctly, who would be allowed to offer testimony at the hearing?
Any town resident.
Thank you, so it's, it's, any town resident?
Any town resident, it's a, it's a public forum, very similar to your, your meetings, to open floor at, you know, town meeting, but this is a discussion that needs to take place on the town level.
Right, so more, more than one meeting then offers opportunity for.
A hundred percent, yeah, no, I think we're, by law, there has to be a public hearing, I believe, because this is such an important issue to the town, there'll be more than one hearing for this specific topic.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I call the questions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, all right, all those in favor of the motion to refer to the planning board the, and start the public hearing process on this?
You have to vote to call the question.
Do we? No, because we have a motion and a second. Okay, all right, all those in favor? I do. I need a vote on the call the question?
Yes, it's in the majority. It cuts off the debate.
All right, okay, is there a second on the calling the question?
Second.
All right, all those in favor calling the question? Aye. Okay. I'm sorry. All right, on the original motion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, you got me. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to invite the advisory committee members up to the table.
Would you, because I see the school committee is here, I think it's a fairly short presentation.
Do you want to hear that?
I'm willing to cede them time.
Okay.
If they, if they want to wait through the budget presentation, they can too, but.
Oh, that's fine, thank you.
It's up to you.
Yep, no, that's great, I'm happy to do that, so.
Much more features are gendered, or the church is, there's a fun discussion, please leave the budget discussion.
Okay.
Can I call the question?
Please don't, I just would like a second, though. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're going to invite school committee members up, if you can identify yourself for the record, welcome.
Welcome, welcome. All the marks will have to be included. So, these are your topics, and you had, this is your topic, and you have, that was thinking, so, I would like to, 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 to,
Okay, so there are, we have a three, a three-person team that's gonna talk tonight. I'll start, then I'll have, and then I'll have Paul and Don join in. So there are, this'll be the third year in a row that we've gone to this comprehensive budget book, which is, I think this year, eyeing up at somewhere north of one hundred and forty-five pages once we incorporate all of capital into it, which is still a work in progress. The, what it does is it includes a whole host of things. It includes a summary of the town, it includes a budget process guide, it includes a big glossary of terms, all of the town's financial policies, the budgets, and a summary of every department that includes headcount, budget, and a summary of their project, what they've done and what they're gonna be doing. The, there's also the Selectman's Budget Messages in there, and then there's a summary, which I hand out a draft and I'll walk through tonight with all of you. The, this is the third year of the project, and the year that we hope not only to have a really good comprehensive book, but also to submit for the first time for an award to the government finance officers. The goal of this is not the award, the goal is to have as much information in front of the public and all the awards as possible. The nice fancy packaged electronic version is still in progress. We've had to tweak a few department heads, myself included, to get some details in, and we've had a couple of department changes very late in the game, so we're hoping over the next few days to kinda pull that all together, you'll all have it, and the advisory committee starts its work, I think, in a week, so you'll be able to start jumping into the budgets and the specific line items. The, the big top numbers that we can talk about, and who wants to start with that? I'll, I'm gonna pass, alright, so I'm gonna play, so I'm gonna start and have a conversation with Don. Don has led the budget process in terms of meeting with departments, pulling numbers together, so let me, I'll let Don talk about the process, to how we got here tonight.
Good, so, Roffin essentially started back in November, early December.
Don, excuse me, do you mind pulling the microphone just a little bit closer? You don't need to talk into it, but, thank you.
About November, early December, sending out budget notifications to all departments.
Gotta move it closer.
Nope. Fair enough.
Hello?
Yes, good.
Um, we expected to have all departments have their budgets into us by Christmas time, but most part, they were in there, trickled in a little bit after, but even before that, we spent time doing our work on the five-year forecast, which, both last year when I first got here, it was the Long Range Planning Group who we had all the discussions with, and so, with that not happening this year, the group, most of the conversations happened between Chris and I, working through all the numbers of that five-year forecast to come up with our targeted revenue for this year and what was available. And then the first week of January, we met with every department, five or six meetings a day, went through all the requests in detail, and then, at that same time, also met with the school a number of times, kept a good, open communication, good dialogue with them about our process and progress within, coming up with the five-year forecast, and then just recently came to an agreement on our final budget numbers for FY twenty for where the town and school expect to be budgetarily. Sure.
Why did you come up with these numbers without using the Long Range Planning Group? It was never set up to have a diverse command of citizens and expertise.
That was not up to me.
The purpose of that was that it wouldn't be just you and the town manager with it, the Long Range Planning Group would participate in the budget process. Why wasn't that done this year?
I, I think, I think-
Wrong question, wrong person to answer.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna jump on you, Don. This is really from all of you. So the board was kind of put on the sidelines, I'd say. That wasn't my decision. I'll work with whoever you want me to. It was kind of a collective decision, I guess, of all of you not to proceed that way.
No, Don, you're not using the Long Range Planning Group, why was that?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Kevin, you may recall that a meeting during the last term, we were asked, the two members at that point, Selectman members, were asked whether or not we were going to re-up, and we pointed out that we had made the commitment so as not to pack the planning group, that we would serve our two-year terms, which were then expiring, and turn them over to anybody else. At that point, no one on the, on the board of Selectmen wanted to step forward and take the positions, and as a result, the, the, the planning group retired itself.
Oh, actually, that's not, that's, we did appoint somebody.
Yeah, I don't wanna-
I was one of them.
Well, then, then, my question is, when did you meet?
That's what my question is.
Yeah.
That's my question.
Yeah, we did, I don't wanna get too far down this path, we did discuss this, I think, in September, and I will, I don't even remember kinda where we did, 'cause you, you, I think we appointed you last, to your point, last term, 'cause you termed off.
I finished off last spring.
And somebody else stayed, right.
I got off.
Anyway, we never, we never got there, and there were other priorities in terms of the big planning discussions. I think one of the things that we did discuss was, because there were so many people from the school committee and planning and getting involved in all the different plans, the master plan, the harbor plan, the town hall plan, that we kind of decided that the work of the Long Range Planning Group had been very big picture, kind of advisory stuff on trends in real estate and development and, and, and future tax receipts and new growth, and that it wasn't necessarily operational budget, and, and Chris and Don needed to start operating, planning the operation budget, 'cause that's not my understanding what Long Range Plan is. Anyway, let's do that another time, I, we need to get through this process tonight with the staff. So, we're back to-
So, yes, so let me, let me tag off Don. So, lots of meetings between Don and the schools as well, there's been a lot of conversation staff to staff, which has been very helpful. Now, one of the, one of the key aspects of the whole budget book has been summaries of departments, and I wanted Paul to talk a little bit about that and some of the things that are in this, there are some of the department summaries, yes.
The pieces of the document, just to give you an idea of how it's shaping up. Obviously, you have the first of the title page, but we include your budget message. The full message is included in here as well as the town managers, and I think on a separate document, you've got the full length, but that's all included in this budget document. And then we also have the five-year forecast, which I think Don's gonna talk in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. This is, and then on the next page, there's about a couple of the departments, this is where, like, a lot of the meat of the, the document, providing mission statements, all the programs and services that all the different departments provide, which kinda gives you a good idea of what, where your money is going and what it's providing, 'cause I, one thing that I found personally when I got involved in government is that the breadth and the depth of what's going on is just far more intense than, than I ever imagined. So, I think this is a very good thing to have. It also discusses, you know, things that were specifically done over the course of the last year, and what the plans are for the future, I think is very important. The veteran service here, a big change here was the, the mission statement, there was a new person, a new veterans agent, so that gives us an opportunity to kinda revisit the direction the departments are going in. We might have, we've met a couple of more new directors earlier tonight, so there may be a little bit more changes in missions next year. And it also includes the, the expenses, you can see on the bottom right of that slide, which will increase, will add FY twenty when we have that information, but you can see it broken down between the personnel and the expenses, and the vast majority of those expenses actually are reimbursed. And treasure collectors, another department, obviously, and, you know, you can get into some more of the, the different, different various programs and stuff that, different functions. And again, the, the variety of the different accomplishments, you know, lots of work done in, like, you, auto pay for the Unipay system allows people to automatically pay their tax bills via their checking account and not have it to remember. We leverage Harper's in a bunch of different ways as well, and we'll probably continue to do that again next year. So, and the other big piece that we added this year was the financial policies, which you folks just approved, like, two weeks, January eighth. So that's being added into the appendix, and the other big piece that we're still working on is the capital, which is, those two pieces are necessary to apply for that distinguished budget award. So that's where we are with that. So it's shaping up, so, like Chris said, we'll hopefully get that wrapped up this week.
I have a question just before, it might, hopefully we'll segue into whatever we're gonna talk about next, but in terms of the individual department budgets, are you sitting down with them, literally looking at what their current operating budget looks like, what it's trending, and saying, do you really need this in this line item, do you really need that in this line item, you know, are you overfunded and we could use more money over, you're literally-
We're going through every line item with every department.
And you're not just looking at, you know, what was budgeted last year and adding X percent?
No, I went back, and I went probably the last three years, looked at what would budget the actual turnbacks, and, and probably looked at the last three years' worth of data, kinda see where we're at. Again, I think it's important to budget conservatively, we only have one really crack at budgeting for the year, you can't really make any adjustments throughout the year, so, to me, it's important that you budget conservatively. So, yeah, there, there will be some surplus built into some of the budgets, but that's kinda how this was planned out for us to get to the free cash and the reserves that we shoot for every year. But, yes, we did, we went through line by line, we're still waiting on a little bit of, you know, a little more explanation for when we go to advisory and go through by department, some of the departments are gonna be adding a little more, probably narrative for when they go through, I mean, facilities alone probably has sixty to eighty lines of detail within their expense budget, so, it's a lot to go through and a lot of explanations we needed for each one, but we have been going through that process to make sure we're just not budgeting the same amount last year, and that, for instance, we did a deep dive last week with Phil Mahone, the new veterans agent, to look at his budget, and we realized there was some extra money that was in his budget that wasn't really being utilized due to the number of veterans who no longer need the services, so, you know, X number was, was budgeted three years ago, he don't need, didn't need as much, so, we were able to move that around within his budget for some new initiatives that he's trying to do for the veterans, the veterans number, maintenance, and stuff like that, so, it was really, it was really good to help and get that information through the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Before I walk through this, summary, let me just walk through the, I know the five-year forecast is printed very small, so I apologize for that. I also apologize for that we don't have AV facilities in this room like we would like to. I, I, I just continued, I wanna come here and wire it myself, I'm gonna have to put it in the budget because I, we can show it on TV, but I can't, I can't show a, a screenshot. The, this past year's, the new growth we're facing, what we had this year, hit eight hundred thousand dollars. That's a, a near-record high, and that's without an Avalon, that's the wrap-up of Avalon, that's the wrap-up of the Cook Estates, it's the wrap-up of the James Lane development, and a number of other homes that have been torn down and replaced on Jerusalem Road and other areas, where the values went significantly higher. The, this, this, the same time, State Aid has been stable but not rising particularly fast, the offsets are continuing to creep, but we actually had a little bit of money that went out in charter school tuition, so we have some folks go to those. The, the big numbers in the shared budgets have pretty much stayed the same. The human resources budget continues to be a shared resource, and as you met Miriam Johnson tonight, she's gonna take a lot more active role on the school side, we shall have, she'll have more time to spend on-site, and she'll be spending a lot more time working with the folks on the school side. As part of our financial policies, the reserve fund continues to grow incrementally to get up to a slightly larger number. What we're also doing in this year's budget is continuing the consolidation of IT functions in the central IT budget, as opposed to it being farmed out in various locations. There's a school IT budget with just school things, there's a town IT budget with just town things, for example, police and fire software and that. What's happening in the, in the townwide budget is all the internet access, the phone systems are up there now, including cell phones, we're moving cell phones up there now too, they're centrally managed, which is good. As a result of that work, there's been some savings, which I'd like to be able to detail a bit more, I'll give some kudos to Michelle Leary, who's gonna be up in front of you in a few minutes, who's done some really great work on managing our cell phones and our cellular stuff, and saved us some nice money, and that's the, one of the benefits of centralized management of some of these things. At the same time, as Don said, we've been going through budgets and saying, you know, it does make some sense if there's a very specialized training, why should that be in the town manager's budget? There should be money in the public works budget or in the assessors budget, there's a conference they go to every year that's part of their annual, you know, curriculum, let's just put it there and have them manage it. If they need more for some special one-off project, then they should come and look for that from HR. So, we're doing a little bit of decentralizing, at the same time, we're doing more centralizing, where it makes logical sense. The, there's money built, there's a continued debt roll-off, which is going into the capital stabilization. The Norfolk County pension number's actually down a little bit from last year, which is really good. Unfortunately, the long-term is not that way, the long-term is trending at ten percent, we've been told to project ten percent increases out, and partly that's because of the volatility we just suffered in two thousand and eighteen, so, that said, I'm gonna take the lower number for this year and be very happy. The single biggest expense that's not salaries in the budget is healthcare. We're waiting on that number. I can tell you that the rate range that was announced over the weekend, the Mass Municipal Association, was minus seven percent to plus five. I can't tell you where we're gonna fall exactly, but my fingers are strongly crossed that we'll be at a zero, which will be great, and it, that will allow us, so Don and I have been talking about this, it's clear that we need to do more investing in our capital resources, and if we do get a zero percent, and we do not have to increase the healthcare budget this year, I, I, our recommendation will be, I think, we put a, a large chunk of that off into the capital, into capital projects. We have investments that need to be made in the town's infrastructure on the school side and on the town side, and we need to, and if this plays itself out, which we'll know in the next month, we'll have a pool, a, a logical place to move it from, without hurting anything else. At the same time, we're looking to increase our OPEB investments, and I know we're, we have a big report that's coming out, this year we were able to put about half, this last year, about half a million dollars into the OPEB accounts. We're looking to increase our hundred thousand annual contribution up to one fifty this year, with the goal of continuing to increase that as we go out in further years. And again, we've committed to put any roll-off from the healthcare into the OPEB accounts, but I think the, the PEB report that's gonna come out later this year will help with a longer-term strategy. We clearly have to address OPEB in the long-term and PEB in the long-term, we have to address our assets right now, we have to make sure that we're buying equipment and maintaining equipment and maintaining the buildings today, we have to make sure we have a steady revenue stream. And while the roll-off has been good, it's not, it's not sufficient at this point, there's, some of the expenses are real, and need, and, we're at a place today where we have the, I wouldn't say the luxury, but the good, the good standing to be able to do some investments without things falling down. The Water Street Bridge is one of those, that's, you know, we got a state report, there's work that has to be done on that bridge, and if we fix it, we don't have to replace it, we can just fix it. That's gonna be a lot easier than, than having people detour through Situate to come back and forth to government island. So, and some of those things, you know, we didn't plan to have to do that this year, there're kind of, there're gotta be times when those things kinda pop up. So, the, the biggest single change though was none of those things. What it is, is the beginning of a consolidation of the financing custodian staff to a shared budget above the line, as opposed to having them separated out in the town and school side. That combination is about one point, a little bit more than a million dollars. It's five hundred and sixty-two thousand worth of custodial salaries and five hundred thousand dollars worth of facility salaries, and we wanna take the first step and make that a shared facilities department budget now. There's a long road before those departments are fully consolidated, there's union, two different union contracts, there's two different management structures, and we have a lot of conversations to have with the schools, we have a lot of conversations to have with the town. That said, there's already a lot of integration now. This doesn't change anything in terms of management, just to be clear, the school still manages the custodians, the town still manages facilities, the school board still does the contract for, for custodians, the town still does the contract for facilities, but it's a start, it's a start towards moving in the direction of, of getting the departments unified. And again, that's, it's the beginning of a bigger conversation. This will also allow us to be able to, to bring them a little bit closer together, we're hoping to have one of our facility staff members, who hopefully will be hired shortly, step up as a manager to help with the school's custodians, to help integrate them a little bit better into the ongoing work. We've had a lot of great staff-to-step conversations, and I know that there's more conversations to have. So this is just the first, recommended first step towards that. Again, it doesn't, it doesn't literally take anything away from anybody this year, but just show it above the line for the first time. Other expenses have not moved, utilities is the way they were, and the other expenses have not moved. The, so, the overall budget would be, the overall unified budget is forty-eight, a little bit more than forty-eight million dollars. And again, there's the same basics have not changed, the tax base is residential ninety-three percent and seven percent commercial, roughly on, the school budget is on its face forty-two percent, the shared budgets are about twenty-eight, and the town side is about a quarter, and there's another couple of percent that go to, into other funds and to the state and county assessments. And that doesn't, you know, there are, more than that goes to the schools from the shared, from the shared budgets and even on the town side. The biggest changes, as I mentioned, are relocating the personnel budgets into the shared services, ongoing consolidation of technology and telecommunications, as we talked about, into the shared IT budget, I think it's better managed that way and we get better value. And also, the Selectmen approved us applying for a grant from FEMA, which we won, it's a safer grant, so we're able to fund two new firefighters for the next three years, not fully, it starts at eighty percent, works its way down over three years, but that will allow us to do that, and the goal is to see, will that actually cut our expenses and overtime? Because right now, if somebody's off, we're almost always having to call somebody back, 'cause you can go from the, you have a shift of five, and you need four people to make things go, and you're down to four already, and then there's an, if they had ambulance call or something, you know, all of a sudden, you're calling people back. If you have six, you don't necessarily have to get down to four. Another impact is OSHA, there's new OSHA standards that are coming to effect in a couple of weeks, and we're not entirely sure how that's gonna affect everything, but it, it looks like it's going to require tighter staffing, definitely on the fire side and perhaps on the police side as well, but we'll have to see how that plays itself out.
How many shifts does the fire department have?
There are four groups, remember they work twenty fours?
Yep.
So it's on, two off, on, three off, but there's four groups that rotate.
So, but there's three new, three-
This would get us to four groups of six.
Four groups of six, okay.
Which would, again, that would allow us to, even if somebody was off, and that often happens for a variety, you wouldn't have to call somebody back, you know, you'd be, with five, you can run, you can run a full shift, and you wouldn't have to call anybody back for overtime. So, we haven't had the ability to, to see, does that really save us money? Because we keep, we've had a, someone had an injury who was in the process of retiring, we've had somebody make a trans, a transfer out, so, instead of being a twenty-four, we've actually been a twenty. So, we're now getting back to twenty-two, which will give us two sixes and two fives, and hopefully, sometime later this year, get to two six, four shifts of six. The delay in getting people hired, because you have to go through the fire academy, is great, there's only so many shifts at the fire academy, and every community in this part of the state is, or the entire state is looking for those slots, so, I think the first slots, we have one kid in there now who's replacing somebody who moved on to another, another town, when he comes out, hopefully fairly shortly, well, the next slots we don't have until, aren't done until August for firefighters. But we do hire paramedics, so they can work on the paramedic side, they just can't do the firefighters. We're also in the process, on the police side, of getting up to the nineteen that was budgeted last year, we still, we haven't gotten there yet. We had a, we had a, somebody leave, we've had a transfer in, and so, we're getting, we're getting there. So hopefully, we have a kid in the academy, we have someone else heading to the academy, and we have another transfer pending, which I think will help, so we're getting, we're getting towards fully by summer, which will also theoretically help with overtime and coverage. That's the goal, that's the plan.
Were anyone in the same background?
At the last, so, the, the fireside has been particularly tight, the, the last list expired, a new one just came on board, a lot of, a number of people have retired, and in, in the region, the first run-through, Hall got nobody off the list, they were looking to hire six people, and now they, they, they finally found six people to go through the academy, but again, the fact you hire, make an offer doesn't necessarily mean they make it. So we've been able to fi, hi, find two to hire, which will, which will fill the grant, those two grant slots that we have at eighty percent funding. So hopefully that'll, I've signed those letters, they're in the process of being background checked. With police, it's a little more, it's a little more challenging, 'cause with fire, at least you have somebody who's paramedic-trained, and at least they're half-ready to go. With police, you could take someone off a list, they may not even be academy-trained, and you have to buy them for six months where they go through the academy, and then six months of probation, and they may or may not work out, so you've invested a year, and you may end up in the same place you were when you started. That's what makes transfers so valuable, we were very lucky this last year, a gentleman from Arlington relocated his wife to Situate, 'cause his girlfriend is there, fortunately for us. Really great young officer, and he's been a great addition. We have another gentleman who's in the process of transferring from another North Shore community, 'cause he and his wife live in Milton, and this is a much easier commute, and it's becoming more of a drag to go north through the tunnels and so, and, and the town has established itself as a great place to work, the department has a good reputation, the town has a good reputation, and people wanna come here, which is, which is a good thing. And that's actually, we saw the example tonight of both Miriam Johnson and Megan James, who we, well, we both recruited, one from, both from nearby communities, we actually cut their commutes, which is rare, it's rare where our geography plays a big role. So, so, let me continue to just walk through the, the overall summary, so-
Can I just ask a couple of presentation problems?
Sure, jump on.
So, I understand we're taking facilities and we're gonna put it into the shared budget.
Right.
The way it's formatted, this is almost a format question.
Yeah.
It seems like it should be dropped down into the shared budget details, do you know what I'm saying? Because, let me, and let me just tell you why I'm saying this, because when you go down, this appropriated forecast is really important for the schools and the town, the general fund figuring out what their budget's gonna be for the next year, and the way we have this, we've netted out basically a million dollars out of the potential sixty-one thirty-nine, which, I understand why, I mean, I think it's just the way the data's being presented, but it could be politically perceived as us cutting way back on the potential, you know, share of the net new budget, you know what I'm saying?
Right, no, I understand exactly what you're saying. We had a lot of conversations with the schools, and, and, and the whole, in the budget made by the moving of facilities was left.
Yes.
So, so, there's, there's no, the, the, well, the budget didn't, the bottom-line budget didn't grow very much, the, the opening did, so-
Go ahead.
Yeah, so there was money to pay for all the other salaries and everything else, so we, the, that's the, that's what happens the first time you move the money, right?
Right, exactly.
And we were able to, to tweak things a little bit, so the, the, the net growth of the split budgets is, is less than a percent, I think it was a percent. The actual number's bigger than that, because we moved the numbers out above the line, so we, we didn't take that money out of the budget and shrink them.
Right. So potentially, for the next few years, it's gonna look this way, though?
Well, the first year it looks that way, then the, in future years, it resets itself, because you've now accounted for it above the line. So, the, the, at that point, you don't have to pour, you don't have to, you don't have to reset that million, it's already up there, so now the, the regular numbers would, it would look a little bit normal in the future. So, I know it's very hard to read, the out-years are all over two percent, two-point-three, two-point-six, two-point-five, at the moment.
But potentially, the school does get a net increase equal to-
Yes.
The shared, whatever's been pulled out for the shared budget.
When we met with, with Michael McMillan about this, we, we made sure that that was clear, and we showed the numbers, and you can jump on that.
What I should probably note in here, for when we do put the final, into the budget document, is that there's essentially a interfund transfer done, at, for the ending balance of about eighty-five grand to the school, giving the school another eighty-five thousand to essentially get them to where they should have been if we did not move that million dollars above the line.
Okay.
Because moving, obviously, moving that million above the line lets new revenue to split between the two.
Right.
So we do an assessment after the fact, to essentially get them to where they would have been. In total, they essentially have a seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-dollar increase in their school budget.
Right.
Just, like you said, the formatting. And we could move- And we could move the facilities just down, shared budgets were. I just kind of put it there, since this is the first time combining two different departments for budgetary reasons. So, we can move them down.
Yeah, no, and I'm just, just because I'm sitting there doing the numbers, and I'm thinking, it may be more logical to drop it.
I'll make a footnote, or I can do something to that.
Couple of quick things. What did you feel the percentage rise for state aid, chapter seventy, and for the local receipts?
They're all about one percent.
One percent?
Very good.
Again, the last two years, two and a half, two point... Chapter seventy with local aid. So these are, again, a real good survey. At the MMA, they estimated a minimum of two percent local aid, two percent chapter seventy, which is over the weekend. And the governor's president will come out tomorrow, maybe in February.
So that's just a starting point, again, so when we get the final numbers from the senate, and then the health insurance, it's kind of best for me, at least, to do all those changes at once, once we have the final numbers. So, for now, probably have that at the one percent, but then change when we get to the final.
Well, the challenge with some of the, some of our bigger numbers, like we had a spike a year or two ago in building permit fees, those kind of flatten out. And while we still have a little bit of a built-in cushion in motor vehicle excise tax, and again, you'll actually see that next chart in the summary page, it's a volatile expense. I realize that the revolution to self-driving automobiles has not hit us, and it may not hit us in the short term, though the world has changed. I mean, I know we're not a land full of millennials, they tend to flock to the cities. I've met more and more people whose kids don't have cars, which kind of stuns me. I don't know how, I mean, you can't live in the suburbs and have some kind of transport. But it's something we have to be aware of as things go forward, because the world of motor vehicle excise tax is going to change, whether or not we want it.
Mike, did you have your hand up, or Paul, sorry. I'll get you a hold of that.
For the coming year, it looks like the town budget is going up five thousand dollars.
It's going up, actually, the, when you take away the...
I think it has to do with the facilities. Does it get some sort of reconciliation between...
Yes, yeah, Don can run the numbers on that. Again, I appreciate both your point and Jack's point. It's hard to show that the base, because we're moving the facilities staff out of it, the net increase is only eighty-nine thousand dollars, but the actual increase is five-hundred-and-some-one thousand dollars.
You're moving the expense line above the line, instead of below the line.
Right.
Yeah, we can do that. And this is part of the conversation here, so you can see the kind of data that you need to vet it. And again, this is the start of a conversation. I know that we've talked internally about this a lot. There's been such a focus on maintenance and being very focused on maintenance and capital, and we've made such light-year steps, both on the school side and the town side, on getting the staff better trained and better focused on being preventative. I think the better we can consolidate those two units in the long term, the better we'll all be. But that's a bigger conversation for all of you. I can recommend it, you all have to approve it. The motor vehicle excise is the biggest single revenue.
Can I just, Ellen had her hand up, did you want to say something?
Well, we've been talking with Louise and Michael, with the full understanding that they should, I mean, they're the primary point of contact for all of you, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that information's flowing through. Either way, we're happy to answer any questions, talk at any point.
My understanding was that it was at this point.
Okay.
No? Okay.
So, can I, I want to keep moving this budget conversation on, because we're getting late, but you should probably take that in quickly.
Can I just make one comment? Again, long-range planning was created a long, long time ago, and it wasn't called long-range planning. And it was really a forum for facilitating the discussion around how the new growth, the new budget, the incremental new growth gets cut between both the town and the school. And I really appreciate all the work you guys have done behind the scenes, because in the old days, it never happened. You guys are way ahead of the game on this one. But to some extent, there's a process, a political process that has to happen where everybody talks about this.
No, no, I understand.
And it's not a criticism at all, it's more like it helps get the data.
That's exactly, Jack hit the nail on the head. That's exactly why the long-range planning was created, that was the core of it. And we didn't do it this year, and it's a shame, really, that the school committee is now sitting here saying that they weren't plugged into the discussion, because that's what creates a lot of problems in our governance. So, I know we're not here to discuss that, so when we don't do the processes that we're supposed to, and they fail us, we need to recognize that and get it right next year, because people relied on that process. I don't like the fact that the school committee is sitting here tonight, and this is new to them, that's a bad thing, in my view.
No, and...
And we had a cure for it, so...
And I just want to say, you know, this is not a criticism, you guys are way ahead. Again, we created that committee years ago, because we had nobody on the ball, and it was everybody getting in a room and trying to figure out how to reconcile the two budgets, right? I mean, you guys are doing your job, and you're way ahead of us, and I'm just raising my hand and making the point Kevin's making. It's a good place for the town and the schools and the elected officials all to get together and talk and socialize this problem. You know, before it becomes a issue.
All right, Mike.
Just to the point that's being raised by Kevin. Is it too late to bring in a long-range planning point of view to the capital budget committee and the advisory committee's deliberations as we move towards the annual town meeting? Is this something that we can pick up and fold in?
Wouldn't bother me, because I think it's good when you bring two school committee members, two selectmen, two members of the capital committee, a member of the advisory, you have that discussion. We went through this several years ago, we had a lot of problems in this town, because we didn't do it. We should have done it, and I'd be glad to meet and do it. I hope it isn't too late, it may well be, but you got a good point.
We started the capital process very early this year, invited the capital budget folks and also liaisons for advisory into the process early in the year. We did the same thing with the budget process, we invited capital advisory liaisons. I realize that folks work, and it's hard to come in during the day. I did have a couple of folks come in and meet after the fact. John Chapman and Don and I had a phone call about the areas that he was a liaison to. So we've tried to open up the conversations as much as possible with all the groups that have a piece of the action on this. Again, we'll meet with anybody that all of you want us to meet with at any point. That said, we're deep into it, the process has begun. So, let me...
Maybe you could call a meeting of the long-range planning, I'd catch you, I'd have this to facilitate on. Why wouldn't you do that?
I, because we, I want to get through this tonight, maybe let's, you and I speak, and then with Chris about this, and see what we can do so that we can all feel as engaged and report back. And, I mean, the idea of planning, to your point, was something we should have discussed and convened in August. We didn't, so we're here. So I'd like to move this conversation along tonight with the staff, and then Kevin, Chris, and I will have a conversation about what we can do to try to make sure that we have the representative voices or ears at the table as this budget process goes forward.
Happy to participate in any way. So, let me just jump to the second to last page, which is these two charts.
Yeah, please.
Just as the advisory committee goes through our process of getting to annual town meeting, and we take testimony, we take input from all the different departments, it would be very helpful to have, as part of our deliberation, some point of view, some perspective from the long-range planning committee as part of what we get. So, simply a report, simply opinions, simply some kind of input from whomever is on that board, I think would be helpful.
Got it.
The last two, the last two charts in this summary show, which is the second, the color bars at the very end of the packet that I handed out first, shows free cash versus policy goals. This is in the town's financial policies. As you can see, we've bet at or within those goals for the last six years. We did have one spike two years ago, we had a couple of tax titles that jumped us way over, and that money went right into special one-off projects. But as you can see, we were right in the zone this year, between the lines. And the second chart has the line where we need to be in terms of our various stabilization funds. And we are just at that line. We actually tweaked, we're tweaking just a tiny bit below, but we're within very close distance of it. So, Don has pointed out that we may have to take a little look at putting a few more dollars in the stabilization fund in the fall. But we're at the triple-A rating that we were able to receive, requires us to be at a higher level, and we're right there. So we're maintaining those stabilization goals, and we're hitting the free cash numbers that we need to keep the budget operating smoothly.
These goals are the ceilings.
Yeah, they're ceilings and floors.
Ceilings and floors.
The stabilization fund is a target to reach. The green and the red are sealed, we want to keep within that zone. Now, obviously, it's almost impossible to hit exactly in that mark every year, but as long as we stay in that zone, we're hitting the policy. It's not too big, it's supposed, it's the Goldilocks zone, it's not too big, not too small.
That's right.
So, the budget book, it's, so the biggest, the other thing that we really deep-dive into, and we're going to get much more into this with the advisory committee, and if the selectmen want any of the committees, departments come in front of them, we have long-term maintenance and DPW issues that we have not historically addressed. Tree trimming, painting, the tide gate. We actually have budget lines for the first time for all of those things. There's always been tree trimming line, but it was, you know, we have thousands of trees, and we're, so we've doubled that, and we've put some other money into some other lines for the first time, because we need to have a line for painting, we need to have a line for the tide gate, because we have to maintain it. We need to have a line for the rain gardens, which has been historically not funded. And we need to have a line, Don was talking about veterans, for the veterans' memorials. There's not been a dedicated line to maintain those, and so we're starting to put some of those very cleanly in.
Chad, I know that that is, you do have a line in the veterans' memorial.
Yes.
How much is it funded this year?
Fifteen thousand is the goal, yeah.
I think also the fact that you got a line, that's good. So, and I know a lot of veterans in town have asked about that, and a lot of people concerned about the fact that the memorials, you know, haven't been kept up and so forth. So, I don't know where in the shift that got in, but it's a good thing, so I think that a lot of people would appreciate that, and I guess it's good.
It's a collaboration between Public Works and the Veterans Officer, so...
And I think the idea of more money on the trimming and so forth, I know that that may have come from our discussions you have on the AdHoc National Grid, you know, maybe so. If you're starting a line, and in order to protect, so that the citizens understand that allows for trimming of trees and so forth, which isn't just a horticultural event, that's the crashing into, I mean, the... Just the, prevents the, on the bottom, but also the electricity lines being upgraded, so there's a good power aspect to that. So, without looking at all the trages, how much did we put into that this year?
The tree trimming is going to go up to, I think, thirty-five, something like that? Yeah, which is about twice what we've been spending before, so...
Go ahead.
Can I change the subject for a second? Page back, open pension.
Yep.
And I appreciate your note in here, but I also point out that the unfunded liability created by prior planned management now requires effectively a substantial increase. I think the estimate is ten percent per year for the foreseeable future, right? So that's a backfill, not forward-looking, right? And the further note down here indicates that we're examining all options outside of Norfolk County. So, can I just ask from, because this was part of the conversation, I realize PEB committee is working on some of this as well, but what options are we considering?
I think the PEB committee is looking at this, and I kind of, I'll tilt to Don for an answer on that at this point. I'm not asking to speak for the PEB committee, but have this conversation...
Essentially, they were just looking to see what our options are. And really, we can go to legislation to try to get out of Norfolk County and join another. But other than that, I mean, there's not much we can do.
Sorry, join what?
Another system if they accepted us. But the next step would, my understanding from Norfolk County Executive Director was that we'd have to get special legislation to get out of the Norfolk County system.
Goodbye me.
But if we're not fully funded, we have to fully fund it.
Well, and that, so, the, I can call PERAC and the oversight of all the state retirement systems and see what that process would be. I'd assume we'd have to get an actuarial evaluation, study of just our town portion, that we may have to come up with significant money to transfer. I don't know how simple it is to just transfer.
I don't either, and...
So it'd be interesting to see, but that is...
It's important to recognize what our options are, because I believe, if I remember correctly, that our achieved rate of return has been somewhere in the neighborhood of about four percent for the trailing ten years.
Oh, the last time, I'd have to look, one of the most recent reports I saw, they were about eight percent.
For the trailing ten years? That would be shocking. And I would question the integrity of that reporting. Because there's no way that we can have ten percent annual increases with eight percent annualized rates of return.
There was a period of time, maybe not ten years, and it wasn't just one year, so maybe it was a five-year.
I'd find that just tantalizingly interesting.
Whatever number I'm referring to, and maybe it's one year, I could have sworn it was about five-year period.
Beyond that, it would be worthwhile to see what our options are, what the cost would be. It's always easiest to say it just can't be done. I'd much prefer for the community as a whole, and the board in particular, to understand what those options are, okay? And frankly, where we've come from.
We would need a special type of legislation.
That's okay.
So, just so you know, PEB is meeting tomorrow night, and they have had a lot of these discussions. And Don, I don't want to spread bad rumors, but my understanding is that Norfolk County has a plan, there is a fully funding point.
Two thousand and thirty-three.
Is that what it is?
Thirty-two, I gave Chris a wrong number.
But...
Two thousand and thirty-two.
Twenty-thirty-two.
But, you know, maybe we can have Katie and Tim come in sooner rather than later. Specifically, because they have done a lot of deep dives and benchmarking and...
Allow me to clarify, I'm directing the questions at Don with the understanding that that would be carried back to the PEB committee. I am not looking to short-circuit the good work that's been done or will be done. But I bring it up for two reasons. One, it's noted in these documents, and the second is, if you take a look at the line item, it grows rather magnificently. Okay? So, thank you. The full book will hopefully be done in the next couple of days. You'll all get an electronic copy, and we'll print some if anyone wants it printed. And you'll be able to chew and deep-dive.
And then, the advisory committee starts meeting soon in department by department. And then, the budget book, to what level will the budget, departmental budgets be in there?
Every department will have its budget in the departmental section. I mean, it won't be the line item.
Right.
But we can, if you'd like those, we can supply, we can provide you anything you want. We, as a rule, I mean, that would make the budget book about five hundred pages, so we don't normally do that.
I mean, it can be digital or something.
Well, we can most certainly provide it.
So in the budget book, what I did last year, within the department, all the major departments that are broken out and have narratives, there's a summary of personnel costs, operating expense, total budget for prior year actual, current year, and then the next proposed year. So the summary level, I can also print out a budget report out of Softrite that will give you the further detail to get to those summary numbers.
I think at some point, we certainly will want a deep dive after, you know, the advisory started to really crack some of those numbers. Okay.
And we're also wrapping the sewer in water at the same time, so that should all be coming together right now, too. The only thing, it'll be, the schools are slightly different, they have their own, a little different timetable.
Okay. All right. It's January.
January.
Thank you, yeah, we're going to bring up, have an update on regional sewer? Want to move along? Thank you, everybody. Advisory, feel welcome to stay.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Don.
Bye. Thanks, Don.
So I have Michelle Leary and Pete Magic up on deck. The, there's been, there have been ongoing conversations about a regional sewer solution for more than a year. And that's been driven to a very large extent by Norse, by Situate's need to address sewer issues in North Situate and Hull's extra capacity in their plant. In fact, they're going to be renovating their plant. And it's, it's built. And they have an ocean outflow pipe, which is impossible to get permitted these days. So for the last year and a half, maybe, or so, staff appointed and elected officials from Cohasset, Hull, Situate, the state and the federal government have all been meeting and talking. There's been a, a kind of a high-level meeting we do quarterly and then a, almost a monthly technical meeting where the sewer folks have actually been drilling down and looking at options. And the, Woodard and Curran has been retained by Hull primary, they've been the primary point on this to do the, the analysis. And a state grant was won for two hundred thousand dollars, I believe it was. That's fueled a lot of the study to this point. And each town has pointed up or ready to pony up up to a hundred thousand additional. We did eighty-five at the last town meeting, which hasn't, I don't think it's been tapped yet. So that's, so we're about to enter that next phase. The, again, the, the drivers of this for Situate are environmental and economic development. And Hull's capacity and Cohasset happen to sit right in the middle. At the same time, Cohasset has some significant environmental protection challenges, particularly involving the harbor, and also some economic development opportunities primarily on three A quarter. The sewer commission has been at the table and talking. That said, potential regionalization is a big community issue, which goes far beyond the sewer commission's charge and touches not, not only the master plan and the harbor committee, but clearly this board and eventually town meeting if, if the conversation's got to that point. There's going to be a regional meeting later in the month. All the towns have been asked to, to bring folks. So if, if up to two of you, it's going to be a daytime meeting, which I'll provide the information on. It's not a public meeting per se, because it's not a public meeting, but it's, it's a meeting that we're going to move this conversation forward further. So I, I, I don't know what two of you are, would be, because it does affect, you know, I know all of you have little topic areas. So I don't know what two of you would be the people to go, or one of you.
What, uh, what's the date?
Uh, we're talking about January thirtieth.
What day of the week?
That's going to be in Situate, I think in the afternoon. Right.
It's in the afternoon?
Yeah, it's generally in the afternoons. But I, we don't have the, we'll, we'll circulate the time.
If anybody is interested, let me know and we'll figure out and we'll send somebody.
And it's, it's a, it's an update summary. And again, there'll be a lot more information shared with the boards in general. So effectively, what's been looked at is, again, it's, it's sewer-ing, the sewer-ing North Situate and getting it to Hull via Cohasset. There are areas in Cohasset that have, South Main is an econo, is an environmental area, an area with environmental impacts at the Gulf River and all. Three A has economic development potential. I know it's been talked about in the master plan. A sewer line there would definitely spur or make opportunities that, that aren't there today. At the same time, any conversation like that has to be coupled with zoning, potential zoning changes. You want to know what's going to happen if you put a sewer in and what could be there. And what would you, even more importantly, what does the community want there, if anything? There are, there are public health issues on three A too. Some of those subject systems have failed. Some have had to be replaced. Restaurants in particular are big, you know, big water users and, and waste generators. Like, a lot of the commercial on three A doesn't really do much of that. Also Avalon is on its own separate system and so is Cook Estates and Avalon, and Toll Brothers. They could potentially plug into a sewer pipe and that could generate more revenue and, you know, free up any potential contamination issues down the road. It's a lot cheaper to plug in typically to a sewer than to run your own small plant on that scale. That said, there's still a lot of conversation to be had, but it's time to really have this, to, to have the, all the boards prepared to deep dive. At this point, the only thing at town meeting you'd be talking about was maybe a little additional funding. But there's a lot of public conversation to be had. And again, as you pointed out earlier, Kevin, making sure this actually, does this fit the town's goals of the master plan? I, I, my, my, my whole goal is just to have the conversation, just to have, help you have the conversation. What you all decide is up to you. And again, sewer committee's been, sewer commission's been actively involved, but this is a town-wide issue. This is, and again, they're, they'll slip with the table, but it's, it's all of you folks need to be there as well. And again, the harbor committee, the, the cleanup of the Gulf River would dramatically change the impacts. It would have dramatically positive potential impacts on the harbor and also potentially on the sewer plant. I know it seems crazy, but the sewer plant, the entire hook for regulatory controls in the harbors on that sewer plant is charged. Even though it's theoretically drinking water quality, if there is nitrogen in it, does it, it has an infinitesimal amount by comparison to the flow of the Gulf River, but there's no permit on the Gulf River because that's time point source pollution. So if nothing is done to fix the Gulf River and all that sewer, if that area doesn't get sewed, not only could there be, you know, action against Situate at some point, but the, the town could be forced to put millions of dollars in improvements into the plant, which I would argue, and I'm not a scientist, but I've had this discussion already, are literally unnecessary and we'd better spend them otherwise. Not suggesting that money wouldn't have to be spent, but if you spend on sewer-ing North Situate, you've got to fix the problem. So these are the beginnings of the, this is, this is the beginnings of the conversation at the next level, which is all of you, as opposed to just, you know, is it theoretically feasible?
Did you expect that they were going to speak?
Well, they're, they're here to answer, they're here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I think the, the first question I have is, is what we've been discussing all night. Like is, will the master plan and/or the harbor plan, hopefully and, do, do they each address sewer in general?
The harbor plan from a standpoint, I think from an environmental standpoint, yes. I think if sewer was developed in North Situate and along South Main Street, that would clean up the harbor. You know, the, the harbor committee came out, I'd say a year ago, when I came on board here in Cohasset, they had nine goals. And one of them was to environmentally analyze the harbor. And so therefore, I would say, yes, the harbor plan does look at it. The master plan does look at it from a standpoint, if sewer was implemented, what could the opportunities be? To tell you the truth, the master plan's a wide, you know, ranging document. I think if we were going to move forward to look at sewer-ing three A, I think deeper di, a deeper dive would have to be looked into from a zoning standpoint and really kind of a visioning of where does Cohasset want to be and what zoning changes could be adopted. But I believe it, there would be, there'd be a large interest for redevelopment and re, I would say, investment within three A.
Should there be a main sewer pipe down the road? Yeah.
And that's the overall question that needs to be, that needs to be answered, correct?
Could change what people want to do with their properties along there, therefore there may be zoning changes that would be.
It would, if the implementation of sewer would open up our great opportunities, you know, for, for better, for higher uses along three A. You know, I think as a whole, being a planner in Hanover for years and now over in Cohasset for a year, the weakest link in, the weakest link in the chain of development processes on the south shore is the implementation of sewer. You know, I think as, as you look around from a regional standpoint, the town of Rockland is currently under a sewer mandate, a federal sewer mandate. So their, Rockland is stagnant right now for new growth. The town of Hanover does not have sewer on Route fifty-three. There's nine wastewater treatment plant, package plants up and down Route three. So if you look at it as a whole, from a regional standpoint, I think this is an unbelievable opportunity for the town.
A couple of questions that, first among them is the, because it's arisen in the harbor plan, is the notation of nitrogen into Gulf River. Has there been any deeper study to determine whether or not that is a, you know, a series of leaky septic systems? Is it runoff from, from highly fertilized green spaces? Which frankly is, was apparently at some point in time, a long time ago, one of the intrusions into the, into Little Harbor. And I ask the question because there will, I mean, it, connecting to Hull could be a very useful thing for us, certainly for Situate. But we also can allocate existing capacity that we currently have prior to that. And a real question then sits there begging to be asked, where is that best allocated for the good of the town? That's the reason from that first question. Can we do any better job of pinpointing the source of the, of nitrogen introduction into the Gulf?
I, I'm not a scientist. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a planner, but I believe so. And a deeper study would have to be, you know, dealt. I mean, you know, it started. I, I believe we could, but I, I don't, I don't have the answer for that question.
Okay.
I, I believe, by the way, the CSCR folks have done some work identifying some sources. And I know that, you know, that's, it's not high science, okay, but it's some great stuff, so it's a.
No, no, I, look, I, I'm, I'm asking the question because of some historic precedent in the past.
No, sure, yeah.
And it would be, and, and there's a reason for, for thinking about this. Because if in fact we were to find that the greatest single culprit was, was true green, not, not leaky septic systems, then for all that we might have done up to that point, we, we would have accomplished very little. And, and we could have allocated that resource elsewhere. Number one, or number one reason for asking the question. Second question, and, and Michelle, I think it may be best allocated to you. Exactly what is our existing excess capacity as it currently stands?
Our, our limit is four hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. So we do have excess capacity. But the board's position has always been that that excess capacity should be geared, stared towards people who have public health emergencies and cleaning up the Gulf. And as you stated, you know, find, finding the real source of what's going on there, clean it up.
Finding the town's priorities, for sure. So Wayne was here earlier. Did we chase him away? Was he here for this?
He was here because he couldn't carry it home.
Okay. And then just one, one final question. If, if you've had a series of regional conversations already, exactly what is the limitation of capacity that Hull would be able to, or would, would ask to pass along to Situate and Cohasset if they were to join the system? In other words, you know, as a, as a point of comparison, could we effectively?
Yeah.
Do everything.
How much they have.
How much they have.
How much capacity do they have?
No, no, it's not how much capacity they have, because one of the things we don't understand is what they want to reserve for themselves. Okay? How much are they willing to offer?
So they need to reserve, they've estimated about one point two million gallons because of all their INI issues. They need one point two million gallons for themselves. Their plant is certified to run its three million gallons currently, so they have all that excess capacity to share with.
How much does Situate process a day? Does anybody have any idea? Have they tried to estimate what it potentially could be?
We do have flows, potential flows.
Diane, I have one follow-on to this.
Based on land use codes, they estimate three hundred and forty-four thousand gallons per day, Situate.
How much? Townwide?
Based on the needs areas they're looking at.
North Situate.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, three forty-four?
Three hundred and forty-four thousand, yeah.
So the, the follow-on question that I have, the follow-on comment really, is that twenty-six years ago, when I moved into town, there was a, a, a firm belief that expanding sewer was the wrong thing to do. Because after all, if you did, development would go haywire and we would look like a neighboring town that wasn't considered to be so appealing. And we've recognized, I think anyone, any one of us would recognize at this point, that the same could be said of Cohasset if we drove down three A and compared us to Situate. And ultimately, it had nothing to do with sewer or lack of sewer, septic systems or lack of septic systems. It had everything to do with whether or not we had the foresight to install zoning, which regardless of where you got rid of your wastewater or how you did it, controlled, managed, and effectively legislated what the, what the community wanted to see from their future. All right? And I simply make that point because if we're considering the possibility of expanding our capacities with sewer, which I applaud, Title V is going to be ever harder to comply with and more expensive, then one of the things that I'd encourage the both of you to recognize is that we should be actively promoting the zoning laws, the zoning bylaws, which produce the town that the residents would like to see in the future, rather than sit idly by and figure that it, whatever happens is going to happen to us, as opposed to managing it for our, our own purposes. That's it. Thank you.
There, there is a call to go to the public hearings for the planning board, you know, on February sixth and, and other times.
And the, and the point of this conversation is just to, is to put this on loop and publicly, that, that this is a conversation to engage in. And it's, and it's not, it's going to take months to figure out, you know, the full scope of this and what the town wants to do.
Well, I think, I think it's a very good comment. And I think it actually rises to the level of, of thinking about how we can give better control of that process, so that we're not to cast them on that.
Absolutely. Jack?
So I just have a couple of clarifying questions. You said something about South Main being sewed, so are we exploring running a pipe down South Main and three A? Or some combination of the both? I mean, if we do three A, do we do, so help me understand what, what the issue is here.
So, so the way the mapping looks today is it goes from North Situate down South Main. It would cut up Beechwood and then connect Beechwood, three A, all the way down to Hull Street.
Okay.
That's what the current mapping looks like today. Everything is very preliminary, so there are many changes that can be made. We've had these discussions, but now we're really starting to kind of get in, get, get into the weeds a little bit in design, where we really want the flow to go and what we think looks best for the town. Some people have proposed ending the pipe at the end of Lower King Street and going back up Forest Ave to pick up the rest of those homes to benefit more of the town, so.
So, and, and you're going to explore too, actually running the pipe from Beechwood down to North Situate on three A and then into North Situate through the Little Causeway? Okay.
My understanding is I think everything's on the table and not on the table right now.
Right.
It's all kind of a hmm.
Been an à la carte menu going along, so we really have to define what we think the need is. And I think your, your comment really hits home because.
Chris, you, you mentioned.
So can I just make a general?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, finish it.
No. Because he wants to speak too. You finish.
All right. So I want to make a general comment about the health of the harbor. I grew up on the Gulf River in Situate. I know what's going on there. It's hard to pick out a point source, but there are many, many, many old cesspools along the Gulf River that are in North Situate. So my guess is that may be one of the sources. The second thing is, is the gray water that comes out of the sewer treatment plant does dilute the, the salinity of the harbor. And, you know, some of the old timers have told me that, you know, there was shellfish in the old harbor at one point and things have changed since we did. It's all anecdotal, right? I mean, so nobody knows. But, you know, there could be some potential significant benefits to the health of the harbor by doing the sewer program. And then the third comment is, I agree with Steve. I think we need a comprehensive review of our zoning bylaws. I think we're twenty years overdue. And I, I really think as a board, we should probably be starting that conversation. What is it we want to do with our zoning bylaws? We've kind of piecemealed it over the years and I think now's the time to really give it a good shot.
Stay tuned on that because I actually have a comment about that soon.
Yeah, so there's, what's there? Several options where the piping can be in Situate through Cohasset. And then hook into one of the, the disney lines and then the like, you know, put them down. You've got hundred access, access capacity. And the question is, from our point of view, where that line runs. So where you want to develop, you want to develop. Main trees, you want to develop. Three A, you want to, that combination. And there could be a modified hybrid system as well. And you mentioned the, some of the, you know, offshore pipes have a usage coastal towns and they give run a pipe, you know, a thousand meters out. It's just water that has to go through the system so that you don't worry about the shelter effects of the harbor.
Yep.
It's, it's not inexpensive, but it's not a harbor expensive thing to run a pipe, you know, a thousand meters out to beyond the harbor and put it. It's not inexpensive, but it's not a hardly expensive thing, just run a pipe, you know, a thousand meters out into beyond the harbor and put it.
And I've been told we actually looked at those proposals and decided not to do it because of money.
Well.
So, you know, one option maybe run the stuff through more process to haul and haul as it out, type of, move it out.
And I've been told that gray water can be sold too far, you know, we could actually sell it to people.
So, so we're having a visioning session without the proper parameters? But I think, I think the point was, this, there are conversations, and I wanted to have them come in and give us just a cursory update that these conversations might start taking and tracking officially. And then, do you think this is something that you would be requesting money for this May as a, like a special article?
Potentially, yes.
Should there be some consensus that there's a willingness to move forward and maybe find a consultant?
There's still money, there is a consul, I mean, so there is a.
Represent our town interests or?
Well, we, potentially, yes. And besides, the town regard, there's going to be, I think, the master plan's coming to fruition. There's going to be conversations, that's going to lead to more conversations. The whole point of this is, is not to stop, it's to start, right? So that becomes the foundation for further conversations. And whether developments, you know, what kind, if or not, and if so, where and how, those all kind of tie together. 3A, part of the reason this conversation is supposed on 3A is not just because it's a major corridor, but because the state is going to redevelop that at the town's request, at least the southern end, between Situate, between the Beechwood and.
Beechwood and the town line.
And beyond, actually, it goes to whatever the first street is in Situate, in three years. It's in the tip, to dig it up and redo it, so it's, because there's been all the concerns about, you know, it's like a speedway, it goes up and down. So that's the time to do it. I mean, if there's going to be a sewer conversation, when it's dug up, you stick it in the ground and you go. Otherwise, once the state paves it, they have the same water terms that we do, it's not going to get put in for a very long time to ever. So this is the window to have those conversations.
One other thing that I'd ask the board to consider on this is the net impact on the town of Cohasset if we were able to link in with the sewer would be generally long-term positive for land valuation, given that we're ninety-three percent residential in our tax base, that becomes critical. It doesn't mean that everybody should be thinking about subdividing their quarter acre lots, right? Again, this goes straight to the point about zoning. But what it does mean is that someone sitting on a current half acre lot that is, you know, that is restricted to a three-bedroom home because their Title V septic system has that capacity and no more, would be after a hookup, looking at the capability of frankly leveraging the value of that lot to a greater degree. That's an important consideration for the tax base itself, because you can't produce and I can't produce any more land. But that doesn't mean that we can't use it to a higher and better use than it's currently being used. So as a property owner, the fact that you might list your property as having sewer, or being connected to the sewer, very simply makes it an extraordinarily much more valuable redevelopment concept for a potential buyer. Basic and intuitive valuation is reflected accordingly. So, something to think about from a long-term perspective. I'm not saying that it's the right thing, it has to be combined, in my opinion, with our town's, not ours, our town's vision of what we want to look like in the future. That's it.
I just have one question, and then if they do want to move on in the agenda. The sewer commission, if I remember in the last five years or so, they, we did give them money to do some kind of a analysis or a study of where priority areas are and everything. I mean, is that new enough or current enough that it could be a piece of the master plan or somehow folded in as like an appendix or something?
A hundred percent.
Okay. I just feel, you know, as if we spend money, we're accused of this all the time, you know, we do studies and they sit on shelves and we do. So if there is something that's current that identifies priority areas or whatever, I mean, I think we know them intuitively, but if there's data that could be incorporated, I think, being a piece of, even if it's like an appendix or a like reference or something in, within the master plan, that again helps us say, this is the vision for the town.
Yeah, no, I believe all town plans need to be folded into the master plan. I think that was critical for the open space plan to be folded in to the master plan. Obviously, Beals and Thomas completing that plan recently. But yes, it's essential, I would say.
So I just need to have a representative, so if you want to coordinate through Tracy and let me know who might be able to attend. And then, anyone's going to be point, I don't know who will be was kind of point on this. I know that Paul and Kevin are on the master plan committee.
Right.
Just going forward. I know everyone's really busy, but, you know, I want, we want to keep the whole board brief, but if somebody ends up, you know, deeper diving.
I used to be the sewer liaison, but I absolutely can't make it that meeting on the thirtieth, but, you know, we'll get there.
All right, even if, I mean, if, even if one person could come, that'd be great.
Okay.
But we'll be there.
I'll reach out and remind people, warrant update and then.
So, I'll make this really quick. So there, I'm going to, I'm going to give you eight different things that are being kicked around. Actually, no.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
So there are, let me, just to talk about four things that are potentially coming through town departments. One is the prudent investor. Act, if you remember, Paul updated all of us on the fact that the town can only invest in twenty different limited stocks like McDonald's and Pepsi and Coke.
It makes Steve crazy.
But you can't invest in FAANG or even index funds. The path that we're going to recommend is that town meeting approve a home rule message to have the state let the town do what's called a prudent investor motion. So we'll have something drafted, you can all consider it, if you want to move forward, you could put it on the warrant. Met with Senator O'Connor, met with Representative Moschino, they were fascinated by this, the fact this even existed, they had no idea. So they've, they've green-lighted, you know, if the town wants to do it, they're happy to support it. Regional sewer, possible additional funding, that's something that we just talked about. There's a voluntary checkup on the tax bill for education, support, scholarships, and elderly tax assistance. There's likely to be proposals to rescind all three of them, because the folks who live this, I'm not talking about staff, I'm talking about the volunteers have said, it's not worth, the money coming in is not worth the complication and all the different committees that had to be created to vet the few thousand dollars that's come in. But it's still there, until it's rescinded, it's still there, so. And folks may want to continue, I mean, those committees do have to be set up to at least.
Manage those trust funds or whatever you want to call them. Can, can there be requests for any department or any?
No, no, these are in state law, these are in specific state law.
Like you couldn't do it for affordable housing, for example?
I could check.
Unless there is a state law that makes that up.
There's a state law that you do it, yeah. And then, of course, there's only amount which you also heard about tonight. Those are four, you know, more unusual ones that are kicking around from. There's two potential citizen petitions that are moving, and I know some folks have heard about the meeting over the weekend of the new environmental group that was talked about in town. One on electrical aggregation, which means the entire town would be a unit and bid out to any supplier. Usually, there's more than one option. NA PC is, the Metropolitan Planning Council has coordinated that for a number of communities, others have done it too. I think Situate just did this. And then people.
Would that be done by a town vote or something?
Yeah, so town may have to approve it, and then people can opt out. If you choose not to take part, you can opt out. Unless you affirm it'll be opt out, you're in, that's how it works.
But the assets remain the same in their own bio-national.
Oh, no, no, I mean, it doesn't change the polls or the voters.
Just one quick question. It was my understanding that the alternative energy voted on electrical aggregation and.
And a renewable energy goal, right, but they didn't vote to move it forward as a committee.
They didn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
They voted to be supportive, but not to formally endorse it to the.
Come here and ask us to consider putting it on the warrant.
So they're both, as I understand, being circled as citizen petitions.
Okay.
So that electrical aggregation, that's those are the phone calls we get, saying, you're a natural good customer. It's basically a, it's like the enrolment, so an aggregation electricity, you contract out to whomever's out there that will do the price. And you can get a contract for, I think it's two, three years, and then you just. It's actually, it's a novel way to kind of lower the prices of the just the electricity, not the delivery charge if you come out and ask them.
Yeah, just supply, it's not the deal. There'll be more public conversation about this, I'm sure, and it's not, you know, this has been done in a lot of other places. It doesn't necessarily mean it's a good idea or a bad idea, it's just an idea. And again, the renewable energy goal's a little different, that's been, Mr. Winter came to meet with me just to talk about it. And so I think that's been morphed, I think, I don't know what the actual proposal would be when it actually hits the streets.
Well, we see this as a warrant article, but we get the advisement, all the affordable committee, and so we actually have a vote within a list that I think.
Well. Yeah, I don't know if they're going to, I, we'll see if they, I don't know if they're going to take a formal, I mean, they voted, but they, let me find out. And when we get down to that point, I'll make sure that we.
We'd certainly love to get a warrant.
Would we want to have their advisement?
Warrant closes when you all close it, but the citizen petition deadlines should be right thirteen, so. And there's also, there's also someone, a gentleman I mentioned in the past who's not, who really would like to get the plastic bag down unlimited. I did talk to him today and told him there is no way to petition to do a binding referendum, because you have to go through town meeting, but you can do a non-binding referendum. Other communities have done that, it doesn't bind anyone, but you can have a vote, so he's just, you know, picking.
It would be a non-binding referendum at town meeting?
No, no, on the ballot.
On the ballot, right.
And I, again, I, the selectmen can put non-binding, you can put binding for taxes.
What is a non-binding?
I, that's a good question, so I'll leap ahead to something I'm going to mention in just a second. Town council will be here next Tuesday from five to seven at town hall for anyone interested in talking about citizen petition or concepts of them. If you want to make an appointment, call my office, it would be better to do that, seven eight, three eight three forty-one hundred, extension five one oh one. And you can book a slot, you can show up too, but if you book a slot, you'll have a slot to talk to council if you want, so. We did that last year, it was successful.
Is there any way he could do it from four to six?
I can ask.
The only reason is because the, that safe harbor program is at six o'clock next Tuesday night. And then one other town meeting action, is there any money that you would be proposing for the twenty, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth?
I'm waiting for, I'm meeting with actually the chair tomorrow, so I'll have a better idea what they're looking for.
Last time I spoke to her, I said I would try to get her on, and, oh, actually, they requested to be on at the end of February, okay.
So how many citizens petitions are we potentially looking at, three?
Well, two, and there's, there's potentially a sewer one, it depends on how that all shakes out. That may come from the sewer department, it may come from, you know.
Do you want anything to do with what we're just discussing, or tangential?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's a 3A property, but it's not, it's not. Well, if that comes forward, you'll know. I'll pivot right to my report then.
Sure.
You'll see it, at the next meeting, you'll have a draft warrant, because I'll have what's on there. The fundamental speed limit conversation, which we picked up last month, it was presented for consideration. Situate has adopted it, but there's been no consensus on the positives or negatives. Chief Quigley has sent a recommendation, he's recommending a street by street as opposed to a fundamental speed limit for consideration. Again, I'm officially neutral. I can say that on one hand, it's easier if you do it all at once, so all the streets are the same. By the same token, I know that, you know, I don't, I, there's been some, Kevin did a little poll out there, and I think people seem to be a little concerned about the concept of the fundamental speed limit. That said, I would recommend that this be put on the next agenda for a public conversation, and you do one of two things. You either adopt the fundamental speed limit for the town, or you adopt a policy, which I'll submit some draft of, on how we can handle on a street by street basis, so people know how to apply. And it would probably be something like, so many people in the street have to ask, we vetted the public safety people, the police and public works materials good, and that comes in front of all of you to decide.
Is there any way, and you might have to look into this, is there, is there some happy medium? So that it's a side street, I mean, I don't know how roads are defined, or, but like North Main Street might not be twenty-five, but Red Gate Lane or Aaron River.
That's street by street.
That's street by street.
But we can't say that, you know, everything is twenty-five miles per hour, except.
Yes, you can, you can do that.
Except the.
It's street by street.
So you could do.
But we wouldn't be getting a petition from.
So what you do is you say, everything's twenty-five miles an hour unless you petition us by October thirty-first, and tell us, you know, let us make a decision.
So Bill Quigley sent us a recommendation that we each got like late today, but, so. But what I'm saying is, you know, can you define like two kinds of roads in town? So that it's not a petition, street by street, but it's, everything's twenty-five, except North Main, Jerusalem.
It's a fundamental speed limit with exceptions.
Sawyer, whatever. Yes.
I believe you.
The default speed limit for a residential street is?
Thirty-five right now.
Thirty-five, that's right. Default speed limit for, yeah, default speed limit for a business district.
I don't remember.
Thirty. Business district is thirty. Thickly settled is a sign that can go up, like the point is that that's what's driving this.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah. It has, hasn't it?
It really has.
And I forget.
Sawyer's thickly settled is thirty, and I've got that flashing light in front of my eyes.
Oh, yeah. I like to set that off as much as I can.
All right, anyway, we'll discuss this at our next meeting, but.
Thirty is second gear.
But I do, I think we should have a lot of information and people to answer questions.
Yeah. Well, there's.
Before the parking.
This is the kind of thing, if we do, really a thorough reflection, we may casually start, not casually, but do it here, and all of a sudden, there's an explosion in town when it goes into reality. One thing I'm, Chief Quigley's memo when he said that it was still under study and there was an issue, maybe we ought to wait to see what Situate's experience is, or why, that seemed to be what we.
There are two residents who have been very, have been very much in my office asking, they want their streets to be lower speed limits. And I've said, well, the board's considering something more dramatic or widespread. If you're not going to do it, they're going to want to take their, have their streets addressed. So I, that's, I just, and that's fine, however you want to proceed, I'm just letting you go.
I do think we need to have this conversation sooner rather or later. We, maybe we will get to the point where we feel like we don't have enough information to make a decision. Another question that I have that I would, I will ask at our next meeting, and would love somebody to find an answer to, is do you have to post, you know, like what are the posting requirements? So let's say we take Street A, and we decide because the neighbors petitioned us, and that's the road we're going to go, or that's the route, that's the, the plan is, we're taking petitions, and we give them the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. What do we have to do to mark that?
We have to put signs up, and there's.
On both ends, and every two hundred feet.
Yeah, there's traffic rules about how often you have to put them up. If you do a fundamental, you only have to post the borders of the town.
I would like to know that, because you know how I hate signs.
Can we bring that up when this conversation?
Yes, 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 I just want Chris to get the, I appreciate it, but, okay.
I will do the best I can to find out.
I will keep my mouth shut. Move us along.
It's getting late.
There's a regional efficiency grant opportunity that's opened up, and I would like to apply for an OSHA, a regional OSHA trainer, manager to share with multiple other communities. We've been talking about this with Maya, and I have at least three other partners who are willing to join with us, other towns. We need to do, we need to come into compliance with OSHA, there's all kinds of manuals and training, but we don't have a need for a full-timer ourselves. And while there's lots of consultants out there, they're kind of pricey, and you don't keep the institutional memory. So Maya has expressed an interest in potentially partnering. If we can get a state grant to fund this position, we wouldn't be on our payroll, we'd be on a Maya payroll, but the grant would pay for them, and we'd share this person, at least for a year, with other communities to get us up to speed. So I just want to bounce that off all of you.
This is, it's an annual corporation on our budget if we do it.
Well, if the first year wouldn't be any, hopefully, it would be a state grant. If it worked, if it proves successful, it might actually be funded by Maya, the loan rate actually saves everybody money, because then it cuts the insurance premiums, it's all.
And this would go underneath the human resources person?
Probably, yes, because of the training. It would probably do most of its work with public works, fire, police, but, and schools too, there's a lot of school issues on OSHA too. But it's something, I have a couple of interested useful partners, and Maya seems to be interested in partnering on this.
I would just be concerned about who's going to manage it.
Yeah, well, Maya would, no, actually, this would be, it would be a Maya staffer, and they'd work, I mean, Miriam is our point person on OSHA issues, because she's been, she was doing it in debt, so she's actually pretty well versed in it.
Yep.
So she'll make sure that departments are coming up to speed. The person that wouldn't be our employee would hopefully be a Maya person, so we don't have to worry about OPEB costs or any of that kind of stuff. And then we'd share them, because we all have the same basic issues, we just don't need a full-time person. We can't be. But we can't be without, either. I was asked to remind everyone that nominating petitions will be available on February fourth from the town clerk's office. There's information up on the town clerk's website, if you'd like to go up there tonight and look, and they'll be available from office on Monday, February fourth, so.
Do you have the deadline to turn them in?
Uh, yeah, it's sometime in March, I don't remember the date, it's on the website as well. But the first day to pick them up is February fourth. And I also mentioned town council being here next week at the town, it'll be at Town Hall, at Town Hall. I think Paul Drenses himself will be here to work on that. And just last, but not least, last, this past weekend was the Mass Municipal Association. Great representation from folks, Jack, Paul, a number of other folks were there. Lots of interesting meetings, and one thing that I was pleased about was that Cohasset was recognized as one of, well, partner communities. And for those of you who have not gotten one, this is the Maya report, and there's a classic page in there. If you want a copy of the report...
I got, I already got mine.
Yeah, you got, sorry, you got it, so. It's Kevin, alright, there you go, so...
I have one too, but I want to send one to my mother.
Yes. So Diana's featured in this, a nice picture of her, and there's actually a picture of our team in here too, so it was great.
Where's Diane? Diane, I didn't see you.
I'm on the board.
Oh, look at that.
See?
You got the person's...
I'll be giving autographs.
So I want to thank everybody who took part in the conference, it was a great, it was a great event, and lots of good conversations.
Are you, okay. Blackman comment, period. Kevin?
Uh, the, this was Monday, the town, the Diversity Committee and Second Congregational Church and others that were actively supporting the annual month of the spring breakfast, which was really excellently done again, as they usually do. The speaker was very interesting. In fact, they spoke about a program called the Eyes for the Men. It was quite interesting, I don't know, it went in great length, but essentially it's urban and a contemporary technique. Austin, where they offer permanent employment through the acts of so forth, and it was a very positive and highly attended annual meeting. So I want to thank the, and we should all thank the diversity committee that holds this as sort of their premier event here. It's, it's always very uplifting and very interesting, and so that's all I just think.
Paul?
Oh, really, the speaker's... Jason, uh, Calvert. He was at Calvert, um, was a superb speaker, talking about how to get kids involved in arts and employment and... Also at the Maya Conference, a couple of things, regional, patient came up in one of the town managers in the North Shore, talking about how to regionalize the bus service that is outsourced, but even going through different counties, I said, different counties. And he said they managed to get a company that does shuttle buses for elder fairs and for just a town. It goes through a couple of their towns, more than twenty years, we've been trying to get to work with a train station. And so, we have kind of the same problem, we have a train station and a big parking lot, but if you had a shuttle bus, it could be a quicker, a minimal, a lot easier to get to the train station. And I went to the, the group that was a petitioning board, the National, of the local adhesion of electricity, and the clean, I started, I guess it was a clean initiative for the town. The electrical aggregation warrant looks to be fairly clean and straightforward. The other one they had, had, I think it was total items, they're still looking at. I'm not certain that's going to make it, but we'll see if they're, final, uh, final draft is on that. But it's rather long, I guess, but maybe more than it would, uh, suppose, um, I think, I think, you know, the monologue is great. I met a whole bunch of people with this information, GeoFemal, stuck down at Mass American, I'm talking, and talked to them and see if they, if they take us on that. They have their entire, uh, the whole school is, is carbon neutral, it's all run by GeoFemal or by in, in, or for, uh, production on-site. And they have a GeoFemal, which I think one of the options for, we can do that, and all GeoFemals, one, one possibility, but that's all I have.
Jeff, anything?
I just want to remind everybody again, Thursday, six-thirty at the Sailing Club is the review of the first draft of the harbor plan. Things are moving pretty quickly, so folks should make an attempt to attend if they want to get a first cut at this.
Steve?
I'm good, thank you.
Two quick things, one is, also on Thursday, there's a CSAR program, so it's probably going to be tight parking over on Government Island. Next Tuesday is the Safe Harbor, how to have the talk with your kids program, which people should really mark their calendars. It's going to be spectacular, really great experts coming in. And I just want to remind the selectmen to send me your traction reports if you haven't already, because Miriam, now that she's on board, she's going to help get everything, especially into a document for, for Chris's goals and objectives, which will be obviously reflecting ours, so, there's a few I haven't received, so send them when you can. And we have two sets of minutes for twelve eighteen and one eight, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have no topic, so I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.